Session is called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa dipdip mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, duyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisilin. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong paghahal. May hilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilamahay. Ang isap ng wata at mo'y kagumpay na napihikin. Ang pituwing na haraw niya kailan pa may magidiling. Lupan ang haraw ng war, kamit pagsitna. Duyay langit sa dipdip ko. Ang inlikaya dapat may mahapin. Ang mamatay ng tali ng sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend proceedings for a few minutes.
Session is suspended.
......
I think they're gonna be all right. Yeah? Alright. You're very good. Okay. Alright. Okay. 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 Okay.
Hi guys.
Oh yeah?
Goodbye.
Okay. Okay. Sure you understand. I say piano. Turn with the light of the mirror. I'm making a story. They appear to be fair. That is a problem. You get the humiliation of people. It's a matter of some of the great. This is a sound. Okay. So you can hurt the better. Being the nice one and the better.
Exactly.
I'm sure she's okay. I'm gonna do it.
I'm gonna tell you what you do. You can't try to make a copy. My son.
Okay.
Hello. Everyone.
The mayor. Alright, you guys.
Session Regime Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we move to call the roll of members.
Secretary is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abweg. Acharon. Akop. Akosta. Akosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkalá. Aliano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Álvarez Frans. Álvarez Mercedes. Álvarez Pantallón. Álvarez Pantallón. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Argones. Arbison. Arsilas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Villisano. Belmonte Jose Cristoper. Belmonte Ricardo. Vinites. Bernos. Bertis. Viason. Millones. Birón. Bulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Meravida. Brosas. Bulupiktang. Kagas. Calderón. Calixt Rubiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Caso France. Caso Fredinil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Cerápica. Siríñez. Chávez. Chipeco. Co. Cobango. Culiantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Osalan. Crisólogo. Cuah. Quaresma. Cueva. Dalipe. Dalog. Dasa. De Jesus. De Venexia. De Vera. De Pensor. Delmar. De Losario. De Los Montalia. De Maporo Dula. De Maporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermitabuain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Yusebio. Ivardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferr Luis. Feriol. Florrendo. Flores. Fortune. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Guendolin. García Jose. García Albano. Geri Richard. Geri Sharon. Gassetaya. Gachilian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomarc. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Arellodong. González Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Foffer. Alusos. Javier. Co. Congun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Lia John. Lee. Limkay Chong. Lubrigat. López Benhor. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Maka Pakalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magodadato Suarto. Magodadato Sajin. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marino. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Milliana. Bendín. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Waminal. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Paciau. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Sagabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Rua Puno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roqueari. Roque Ruelio. Sakdalan. Segarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Salón. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Rejto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sevillano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Xinson. Juan Cigastrelita. Juan Cigoracho. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Cherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Treñas. Tugna. Tupas. Turapi Nataman. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Bilarde. Vilasco. Vilasco Catera. Veloso. Bergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villara Sá Suarez. Villarica. Villarin. Vilago. Yap Arthur. Yap Meléxio. Yap Victor. Yu. Semora Marcarmen. Semora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri.
Mister Speaker, the roll call shows that two hundred fifty-seven members responded to the call.
With two hundred fifty-seven members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a call room.
Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker.
Uh, what is the pleasure of the gentleman?
Again.
Congressman Atsensah.
We would like to point out the count of members on the floor. This is the biggest number we've had since we started the seventeenth Congress. But we do not have two hundred fifty-seven. We only have two hundred forty-seven. Again, the secretary is ten over what is reality. Just to make it of record that we're contesting the count just announced by the secretary.
Noted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, your honor, as always, it is the count of the plenary secretariat which we follow for the establishment of our call room. Mister Speaker, I move that we take up for approval on third reading House Bill four seven two seven. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting?
The Secretary General.
I make an objection.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman, the Majority Leader?
Mister Speaker, I move for the recognition for his objection of the gentleman from the first district of Albay, the Honorable Edsel Lagman. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Lagman is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. The third reading today of the debt penalty bill is patently premature. It is not compliant with our Constitution, more particularly section twenty-six-two of Article six, which I would read and I quote. "No bill passed by either house shall become a law unless it has passed three readings on separate dates. And printed copies thereof in its final form have been distributed to its members three days before its passage, except for the precedent certifies to the necessity of its immediate enactment." I would like to underscore the phrase, "Printed copies thereof in its final form have been distributed to its members three days before its passage." This constitutional prescription is reiterated under section fifty-eight of Rule ten of the Rules of the House, which provides practically the same language. The reported distribution of the printed copies to the offices of the representatives last Thursday and Friday is unabailing and not compliant with the provision of the Constitution because what is required is distribution to the members, not to the staff members. The alleged distribution last Thursday is fatally defective because on Thursdays, representatives are not in their respective offices because most of them go home to their respective districts for constituency work and some have appointments with government officials concerning their districts, while Fridays are non-working days in the House of Representatives. Moreover, allegations that, allegations that copies were emailed to the representatives last Thursday or Friday is again non-compliant as there is no showing that that was that, what was emailed was a body-physical copy of the final printed form and that representatives actually opened their respective emails on said days. Furthermore, there is no indication that the email addresses are the representatives' actual representative, respective accounts, not the email account of a staff member. Barely, Mister Speaker, the first opportunity the representatives were able to get the printed copies would have been yesterday, Monday, zero-six March twenty-seventeen, when they are presumed to be in their offices since Monday is a session day. Counting the three-day rule from Monday and consistent with the computation that the first day is excluded while the last day is included, the third day will still be on Thursday, zero-nine March twenty-seventeen. Consequently, the third reading is only sessionable starting Friday, ten March twenty-seventeen, but Friday is not a session day. Consequently, the third and final reading of House Bill number forty-seven twenty-seven should therefore be next week, Mister Speaker. On the basis of this, I strongly object to the, to the final reading or third reading today of House Bill number forty-seven twenty-seven.
The Majority Leader is recognized.
Thank you. Before I move to divide the House, let me just address the issues raised by the gentleman. First of all, Mister Speaker, what the Constitution and our rules require are three-day service to the members, which was complied. The copies of the bill were distributed to the offices of the members on Thursday as accepted by the gentleman. In fact, we have here a receipt of his staff signed by Juan Carla Badong on March second at ten twenty-eight a.m., March second, Thursday. So if we exclude the first day of the receipt, we start Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Today is the fifth day since the gentleman received it. The receipt by the clerk is already equivalent to personal service, even the Rules of Court require and allow that. It says, "Personal service," under section six of the Rules of Court, says, "Personal service is made by personally delivering a copy to the party or his counsel or by leaving it in his office with a clerk or with a person having charged thereof." So the copy of the gentleman was received by his clerk in his office. So furthermore, Mister Speaker, even in this Congress, we have had several instances, and I will cite to you, that on October thirteen, we approved on third reading the following Monday, which was October sixteen, several bills that were delivered to the offices of the members, like House Bill number three-three-five. an act authorizing the court to require community service in lieu of imprisonment for the penalty of arrest menor, etc., House Bill Number 336, an act excluding from the application... These are loss of national import. An act excluding from the application of the indeterminate sentence law those convicted of criminal offenses. And many other bills, Mister Speaker. House Bill Number 477, 1344, 3955. And again, on December 8, copies of bills were delivered to the offices of members on a Thursday and we voted on the bill on a Monday. And these are House Bills Number 64, an act strengthening compliance with occupational safety, health standards, and providing penalties therefore. And other bills, like House Bills Number 4144, 400, 938, 4469, and many more, Mister Speaker. And Mister Speaker, the purpose of the three-day rule is to afford the member notice that this matter will be voted. This bill was discussed extensively on Wednesday, March 1, and the gentleman even introduced several amendments which were all rejected. So Mister Speaker, since the gentleman has objected that we take it up on the third reading, a motion was duly seconded. Before we go on... I move now that we divide the House and vote on the... Mr. Speaker, let me just rebut some of the statements of the Majority Leader. Mister Speaker, I object to that because he was given time. Otherwise, we will have a debate here. I am... We're now in the process of voting. There is a motion duly seconded. The gentleman objected and was given time to explain his objection. I just supported the motion, so it's time that we should vote on it. It is necessary, Mister Speaker, to join the issues. We have not joined the issues. I would like to have... I move, Mister Speaker, that the gentleman be given three minutes, Mister Speaker.
Okay, um, the Honorable Lagman is given three minutes to say, to make a statement.
Mister Speaker, it is true that even on Thursdays, my office is open and I have staff members manning the office even if I am not there. So in my particular case, the copy of the printed version was delivered to my office and received by a member of my staff. But that is not the procedure because according to the constitutional rules, the copy must be distributed to the members. No, I was not in my office. And in my particular case, granting that is sufficient notice. How about the other members of the House? Who were not in their offices last Thursday and there were no clerks or staff members in their respective offices? There were... There was no valid service as far as they are concerned. Now, let us now enumerate who were the members of the House who had their offices open and the copy as printed in its final form had been delivered and received by their respective offices? Now, the good Majority Leader cited previous bills which were approved on third reading most probably without following the three-day notice rule. But previous violations will not validate a current violation. And what is the purpose of this, uh, three-day notice that was underscored by the Supreme Court? In the following words: "With respect to members of Congress as follows: To inform the legislators of the matters they shall vote on and to give them notice that a measure is in progress through the enactment process." That is in the case of Lagman versus Ochoa, and I should know about this because I was petitioner in that case before the Supreme Court. Barely, Mister Speaker, what was served in my office last Thursday will not apply to other members of the House. I have asked other members of the House, even after today, they have not received a copy of the final printed form. And some were just inserted under the door. That is not the service required by the Constitution and required by the Rules of the House. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, as we can see here, I think this is the greatest attendance ever of members, so they have been duly notified. I now move that we vote on the objection, Mister Speaker.
It has been moved and seconded that we proceed with the third reading of Bill Number 4727. The...
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker.
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it.
Mister Speaker. Mister Majority Leader.
House Bill Number 4727.
The Secretary General will proceed with the nominal voting.
Again, you are mustering Congress, and this is wrong.
House Bill Number 4727, an act imposing the death penalty on certain heinous crimes, repealing for the purpose the Republic Act Number 9346, entitled "An Act Prohibiting the Reposition of Death Penalty in the Philippines" and further amending Act Number 3815 as amended, otherwise known as the Revised Penal Code and Republic Act Number 9165, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002. Roll call of members, consideration on third reading on House Bill Number 4727. Honorable Representatives, a vote...
Voting cannot be interrupted. I'm, uh...
Abaya.
I'm sorry.
Abayon.
Mister Speaker, ang voto ko po ay no. Mister Speaker, may I explain my vote?
Abayon.
Uh, explanation of vote will come later after the nominal voting has been counted.
Abel Janosa.
Mister Speaker, I will explain my vote later. I abstain.
Abu. Abueg. Asharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adyong. Adbinkula. Agarao. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alcala. Alejano.
Mister Speaker, I vote no.
Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantaleón. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino.
On behalf of the Fourth District of Nevesia, I vote yes.
Antonio. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atienza.
We vote no, and we would like to explain our vote.
Aumentado.
Later, you will have the opportunity.
Bagau.
Mister Speaker, I vote no for the reposition of the death penalty, and I reserve my right to explain my vote.
Bagatsing. Bagilat.
Mister Speaker, I vote no, and I would like to explain my vote after the voting.
May I request the gallery to refrain from clapping while the voting is ongoing?
Banal.
Mister Speaker, I vote no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batohabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Peliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher.
Mister Speaker, the Sixth District of Cason City votes no, and I would like to reserve my right to explain my vote after.
Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Viazón.
Mister Speaker, I vote yes with reservation to explain my vote later.
Biliones.
Mister Speaker, I vote no, and I reserve my right to explain my vote later.
Birón. Bolilia.
My vote is no, Mister Speaker.
Bondok. Bordado.
Mister Speaker, my vote is no, and I will explain later.
Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maria Vida. Brosas.
Mister Speaker, ang voto po ng kinatawan na ito ay no, at nais po naming magpaliwanag ng voto.
Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixto Robiano.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the people of Pasay, I vote yes, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Harry. Casilau.
Mister Speaker, my vote is no. I reserve my right to explain my vote.
Castelo. Castro Franz.
Mister Speaker, I vote no. I will reserve my right to explain later.
Castro Fred. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Cerapica. Chiriles. Chaves. Chipeco. Co. Cowanko. Coliantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Cosalan. Cristólogo. Cuah. Juarezma. Cueba. Dalipe. Dalog. Daza.
Mister Speaker, I vote no, and I reserve the right to explain my vote.
De Jesus.
Mister Speaker, ang voto ko po ay no, at mamaya po ay papahayag ko ang dahilan.
De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar.
Mister Speaker, of course, I vote no.
Del Rosario. Del Osomontalia. Dimaporo Abdullah. Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid. Duabit. Durano. Di. Elago.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of Kabataan Portales, I vote no, and I reserve my right to explain my vote later.
Enverga. Erise.
Mister Speaker, I vote no, and I reserve the right to explain my vote.
Regel. Hermita Buahin. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Yusebio. Ebardoni. Pariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet.
Mister Speaker, I vote no.
Ferrer John John. Feriol. Ferrendo. Flores. Fortun.
Mister Speaker, I vote no.
Fortuno.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of my constituents in the Fifth District of Camarinesur, I vote no.
Fuentavelia. Garbin. Garcia Gwendolin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Albano. Garin Oscar.
I vote yes, Mister Speaker, and I am willing to explain my vote later.
Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Heron. Go Ana Cristina. Go Mark.
This representation from Baguio City votes no. I will explain my vote later.
Gomez. Gonzaga.
Mister Speaker, I will vote yes, but I would like to explain my vote later.
Gonzalez Alexandria. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Fernando. Loriseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hopper. Halos Jos. Javier. Co. Kong Hun. Labad Labad. Lacson. Lagman.
Mister Speaker, my vote is no. I will explain my negative vote later.
Lanete. Logan. Asatin. Leation.
This representation votes yes and with reservation to explain my vote later. Thank you.
Lee. Lim Kai Chong. Lo Brigat. Lopez Benhar. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel Luis. Lopez Manuel Luis. Loyola. Apagal Arroyo.
I vote no.
Maceda.
Please, sir, refrain from clapping.
Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodadato Soharto. Mangodadato Zahid. Marcoleta.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no.
Marcos. Mariño. Martinez. Marquez. Matugas. Meliana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado.
Sir Speaker, this representative from the province of Southern Late votes yes and I will explain my positive vote later.
Mirasol. Montoro. Naba. Nieto. Noel. Noglares Jerigo. Noglares Carlo. Nolasco. Nunez Malanyon. Uaminal. Okampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Bini. Paciao. Paduano.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no.
Palma. Pancho. Anganiban. Anotes.
Mr. Speaker, for God above all else, I vote no.
Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda.
Mr. Speaker, I vote for a crime and drug-free Philippines, so I vote yes.
Plaza. Servicias Agabas. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramire Sato.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the people of Occidental Mindoro, I vote no.
Ramos. Relampagos. Rebilia. Roa Puno. Robes. Rocamora.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no with reservation to explain my vote later.
Rodriguez Isidro. Rodriguez Maximo.
Speaker, this presentation for the second district in the order votes yes.
Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque Harry.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and I would like to reserve my right to explain my vote.
Roque Rojelio. Sakdalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo.
I vote yes and I shall state my reason after. Thank you.
Salon.
Mr. Speaker, this representation from Agri Partelist votes no.
Sambor. Sandoval. Santos Repto.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no.
Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar Mary. Sabelliano. Semah. Xiao. Silberio. Singson. Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Rasyo. Suarez. Si Alvarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherny.
Mr. Speaker, Kusog Tausog Partelist votes yes.
Tejada. Tebas. Tianco. Ting. Tinio.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and will explain my vote later.
Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna.
Mr. Speaker, our vote is yes and I am making a reservation to explain my vote later.
Tupas. Turabin Hataman.
Mr. Speaker, anapmin de now votes no and we reserve our right to explain our vote.
Ti. Umalire. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta.
Mr. Speaker, I vote for yes and I would like to reserve my right to explain my vote later.
Vargas. Vargas Alfonso.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no.
Bellarde.
Mr. Speaker, this representation from Bohi Partelist votes no and would like to reserve the right to explain my vote later. Thank you very much.
Belasco. Belasco Caterra. Veloso. Bergara.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and would like to be given the chance to explain my vote later.
Villafuerte. Villanueva. Villarasa Suarez. Villarica. Villarin.
An emphatic no, Mr. Speaker, and I will reserve my right to explain the vote later.
Biolago. Yap Arthur.
Speaker, I vote yes and I reserve the right to explain my vote later.
Yap Meleshio. Yap Victor. You. Samora Maria Carmen. Samora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and I would like to explain my vote.
Senko, Ponomal Voting on House Bill Number 4727, Honorable Congressman and Congressman.
Mr. Speaker, may I know how my vote is recorded?
Your vote has not been recorded yet. We have the second round.
Abad. Asharon. Aglipay Biliar. Alcala. Antonio. Barbers. Ceriles. Espino. Fernando. Florendo. Fuentebelia. Garbin. Lee. Mangodadato Soharto. Mendoza. Okampo. Ong Harry. Romero. Romualdes. Villafuerte. Yap Victor.
With an affirmative vote of 216, negative vote of 54, and abstention 1, House Bill Number 4727 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move that the Secretary General call the roll of members for those who wish to explain their votes. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
May I remind that those who will explain their vote will have three minutes to explain their vote.
Roll call of members. Abaya.
Mr. Speaker, boto po ay no. Ang mga dahilan na aking boto ay sumusnod. Una ang sistema hustisya sa ating bansa ay hindi handa upang isiguro na ang parusang kamatayan ay mapapatawala mang sa tunay na may sala. Sa kaso ng People vs. Matteo, sinabi ng Corte Suprema na sa bawat sampung kaso galing sa trial courts na may desisyon kaparasahan ang kamatayan, tatlo lamang ang tama at pito ang mali. Masyado pong malaki ang posibilidad ng inosenteng tao ay mapaparusahan ng kamatayan. Isa pa po, malaking porcento sa mga pinapatawan ng kamatayan ay mga mahihirap at 'yung mga taong walang kakayahang magbayad ng magagaling at muuusay na abogado. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, sa bagiikot ko po sa aking distrito na pagalamang ko na ang aking mga kababayan ay hindi pa bor naibalik ang death penalty. Naniniwala ang karamihan sa aking mga kadistrito na ang buhay ay sagrado at hindi solusyon sa pagsubpo ng kriminalidad ang parusang kamatayan. Bilang kanilang kinatawan sa Kongreso, nais ko pong irespeto at daliin ang kanilang boses sa pamamagitan ng aking boto. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Abayon. Abellanosha.
Mr. Speaker, I will explain my vote. I voted to abstain. I voted not according to my personal stand and I voted not even according to my conscience. But I voted according to the very fundamental reason why we are here and that is as representatives of our people. Therefore, I voted according to the desire of my constituents in the second district of the city of Cebu. And in behalf of most of the 350,000 voters who elected me to be the representative and their voice in this August Chamber of Congress. After a thorough process of consultations with them, I am very surprised to learn that the issue on death penalty has deeply cut and divided my constituency almost to an equal degree. I am therefore constrained to abstain and hereby propose to submit this highly sensitive and divisive issue to a referendum in the future, possibly during the barangay elections this October.
Abu. Abueg. Asharon. Akop. Acosta. Costa Alba. Adiong. Edvincola. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Biliar. Albano. Alcala. Alejano.
The honorable Alejano, we'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have manifested the negative vote on the House Bill Number 4727, otherwise known as the Death Penalty Law. Please allow this representation a few minutes to explain my position. We in the Magdalo Partelist vote no because we put significant importance to a person's right to life. Right to life means that nobody can end or try to end one's life, even the government. We subscribe to the Constitution, the supreme law of the land, when it states in Article 2, Section 5 that "the maintenance of peace and order, the protection of life, liberty and property and promotion of the general welfare are essential for the enjoyment by all the people of the blessings of democracy." The duty to respect and protect one's life, as stated herein, extends even to criminals. Sending them to death is a violation of this right. We vote no because the imposition of the death penalty is not justice per se. It is a sanitized form of vengeance, retribution, guise as justice. Justice for us is the introduction of reforms or improvement in our crime prevention system, the certainty of apprehension of prosecution, and the imposition of a fair and effective criminal justice system, including the restorative aspect to afford criminals the opportunity to reform and rebuild their lives. We vote no because sooner or later, an innocent life may be executed because the penalty of death are meted out and administered by fallible humans or a flawed justice system. Wrongful convictions are always possible and probable. The erroneous conviction may result to an erroneous execution of an innocent suspect, an irreversible verdict. One innocent life taken is one life to many, as they say. We vote no because we will lose our moral and competitive edge if we revive death penalty. Moral advantage in negotiating for the life of an OFW sentenced to death abroad. We have always intervened with the foreign government when the Filipino was sentenced to death. How can we tell other countries that killing is wrong when we allow killing in our own country as well? We also lose our competitive edge and sacrifice our generalized system of preferences plus, or GSP plus, status with the EU with the reimposition of the death penalty. We are risking our ties with the EU and risk losing export sales which amounted to $7.17 billion, and that is in 2015. History was certainly jumps us beyond our turns here in the House of Representatives into our retirement from public service. Thank you, Honorable Speaker.
Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantaleon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya.
Speaker.
The Deputy Speaker Andaya, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. The total crime volume in 2016 was 584,733. Or to put it simply, Mister Speaker, one crime is committed every 54 seconds. Last year, one rape was committed every 56 minutes, one robbery every 24 minutes, one theft every 10 minutes, and one murder every 45 minutes. But that figure is for crimes officially reported, Mister Speaker. In contrast, SWS said 2.8 million families were victimized by thieves, robbers, or burglars, or kidnappers just in the second half of 2016. However, Mister Speaker, all crimes, whether common, complex, heinous or not, blathered or forgotten, should be solved. Whether a person is accused of selling one ton of shabu or one teaspoon, he must be arrested. Whether he is charged for killing hundreds of people or just knifing one person, he must be prosecuted. The punishment may vary. It could be life in jail or life that ends in the gallows, but the process to be followed, Mister Speaker, remains and should be the same. In reality, siyeto tolang, Mister Speaker, the real crime prevention deterrent is the certainty of apprehension, the certainty of prosecution, and the certainty of conviction which deters crime. But sadly, Mister Speaker, our own Philippine National Police is 22,000 short of its authorized 184,000 troop strength. It lacks 17,000 guns, likewise 1,500 patrol vehicles. The police station in front of the Batasan, Mister Speaker, has a policeman-to-resident ratio of 1:5,000. Medyo mabigat ang trabaho nila, Mister Speaker. Our prosecutors have a caseload of 500 cases each. Buy and bring your own computer and paper pa. Our PAO lawyers have a caseload of 5,237 clients. Malayad sa Mister Speaker, ang congestion at galaw sa mga korte. At any given time, the backlog is 650,000 cases. Maraming sala na walang hoes sa RTC na lang. Out of 1,229 RTCs, 166 ang bakante at 204 ay hindi pa naorganisa.
I just wish to remind, Honorable Andaya, that your three minutes are at five.
I will take the time of my previous congressman who did not take his three minutes, but I'm winding down, Mister Speaker. Pagkaakusado, sentensyado, kalaboso siya sa kulungan na mistulang headquarters ng Criminals Incorporated o studyan ti sa masteral ng criminal management. Ano ang punto ko, Mister Speaker? Hindi lang parusa, kundi ang buong sistema ang ereporma. Sangayon ako sa konsepto ng hindi mandatory ang death penalty, sangayon din po ako sa automatic review, at sangayon ako na iisa lang ang krimen na sakop ng batas na'to. I vote in affirmative.
Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atienza.
Mister Speaker.
We have three minutes, Honorable Andaya.
Yes, salamat po. From the beginning that we tackled this bill in the halls of the 17th Congress, sinimulan po niyo na hindi payagan ang malayang talakayan. The free debating on the basic issue of death, death penalty for our people, you did not allow. You terminated the period of interpolation abruptly and against the rules of the House. You terminated the period of amendments again unilaterally without any debate on the basis of your desire not to listen to reason. Mga minamahal kong mga kasamahan, Mister Speaker, today, we should have been allowed to explain before the vote. Tradition dictated that the minority should have been given a chance to speak before the body. You did not allow this once again. Kaya ngayon, inaprubahan niyo itong batas na ito na isang sumpa sa ating bansa, a curse on our predominantly Catholic nation. Eighty-six percent of our people are Catholics. We must put that in mind. When we pass laws, we should consider our faith. So mga minamahal kong mga kasamahan, Mister Speaker, hindi kayo nakinig. Sa tunay na tinig, ang may-ari ng buhay ng bawat nila lang. We have many reasons to say no to this measure. Sapagat ito ay labag sa ating mga nilagdaang mga kasunduan sa United Nations. Ito po ay labag sa ating saligang batas. Ang sabi ng saligang batas, for compelling reasons, you can restore the death penalty. But what's so compelling about mismanagement, about corruption in the police, in the prosecution, in the judiciary? Ang problema po natin sa bansa sa paglalahan ng ating problema sa droga ay corruption and mismanagement of government. Kaya kailangan po questionin natin ito sa nakatataas pang hukuman. We believe that it's a violation of our constitution and even a violation of the rights of the members of Congress when you did not allow us to speak freely, fully, and ventilate our sentiments and our feelings and our thoughts and our dreams and our vision as a free Philippines. I binaglaban po natin ang karbataan at kalayaan. Hindi upang sufillin na katulad po ng nangyari sa hapong ito. We have proven time and again that we can do it without killing people. Ang iyong lingkod ay biniyayaan ng Panginoon Diyos maging alcalde ng Manila ng siyam na taon. I binagmamalaki ko, sa siyam na taon na yon, wala kaming pinatay, wala kaming sinalvage, wala po kaming kinitil na buhay. At ang aking pinag-alagaan ay ang tamang pamamahala. We reformed the police. We made sure that economic activities are given our poor and we were able to improve the conditions of criminality and fight drugs in the city of Manila from 1998 to 2007. So I cannot in conscience whatsoever agree.
May I remind the gentleman that you have exhausted your three minutes?
Well, I'd like to request for one more minute so I can wind up.
Just wind up your statement, your honor.
Salamat po. Ang aking pong naaisipalala sa lahat. Ang buhay ay isa lang ang may-ari. Nung nilalang ang sandibutan, lahat pa may buhay. Ibon, insepto, ahast. Nagumagapang ahast sa gubat, ang tao lang ang walang buhay. Kumuan ang putik ang ating Panginoon, hinugis niya sa kanyang sariling mukha at kanyang sariling anyo. Hiningahan niya ng buhay yang putik na yan. Doon tayo nagmula lahat bilang mga tao na nilalang ng Panginoon Diyos. Sa hapong ito, nilagpasan niyo kapangyarihan yan. So I say, today, we rule. Tomorrow, nature and God will rule forever. Thank you.
Augmentado. Bagaw.
Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, I vote no to the proposal to reinstate the death penalty based on our fundamental values anchored on social justice and human rights and dignity. Ang urong sulong na pagtanggal ng mga krimen na nasa sakop sa parusang bitay tulad ng rape, plunder, murder, ay indikasyon na wala naman talagang sapat na pamantayan para sa compelling reason at heinousness na isinasaad na kondisyon ng Korte Suprema para sa pagbabalik ng parusang bitay. Ang pamantayan lang ngayon ay kung ano ang utos ng mayorya. Ang pagboto ng yes sa parusang bitay ay pagsangayon na mamatay ang mga mahihirap at ang mga hirap maabot ang tulung paligal. Ang pagboto ng oo sa parusang bitay ay katumbas ng pagdiin sa kamatayan ng mga OFW na nasa death row. Ang pagboto ng oo sa parusang bitay ay pagsabi na pwede nating talikuran ang mga kasunduan natin kasama ang ibang bansa na katumbas din ng ating mga batas dito sa Pilipinas. Extra judicial o judicial manang tawag dyan, ang pagpatay ay pagpatay. At tungkulin natin sa Kongreso ito na pangalagaan ng ating mga mamamayan at isulong ang katarungan. At kung nakikita nating may problema sa sistema, maghanap tayo ng paraan upang maayos ito na hindi sumasagasa sa karapatan at dignidad ng tao. Kaya muli, Mister Speaker, mga kasama, ang boto ko po ay no to the imposition of death penalty. At tatanggapin ko po at yayakapin ang lahat ng kapalit ng botong ito. Maraming pangsalamat.
Bagatsing. Bagilat.
Mister Speaker. Honorable Bagilat is recognized to give his three minutes.
Una sa lahat, ang aking pagtutul sa death penalty ay batay sa aking pananampalataya. Diyos ang nagbigay ng buhay natin na tangin siya lang ang dapat bumawi nito. As a Christian and as a liberal, and I would like to emphasize that the Liberal Party has taken a party position against the death penalty. Ako'y naniniwala na ang bawat tao, ano man ang kanyang pagkakamali, ay may karapatang mabuhay at maiwas to ang kanyang pagkaligaw ng landas. Ayon sa mga authors, ang pangunahing dahilan sa pagbabalik ng death penalty ay upang mapababa raw ang kriminalidad. Ngunit ang ating mismo mga kapulisan ang nagsasabing gumababa naman ang crime mate kahit nawalang death penalty. Bukod dito, maraming pag-aaral ang nagsasabing hindi naman nakapakapagpigil ng krimen ang death penalty. Sa makatuwid, malinaw na walang compelling reason upang ibalik ang death penalty. Hindi rin binibigang pansin ng mga pro-death legislators ang economic cost. Mamawalan tayo ng bilyon-bilyong dalyar mula sa exports kung ibabalik ang death penalty. Dahil sa ilalim ng general systems of preference ng European Union, Filipino products like garments, electronics, bananas, and others are granted reduced or no tariff because we meet certain human rights criteria, including the abolition of the death penalty. Sa pagwakas, Mister Speaker, mga kasamahan dito sa Kongreso, lahat naman tayo po ay may sariling mga political parties at political aggrupations. Lahat po tayo ay may mga party dictates. Ngunit sa huling dako, tayo po ay mga mambabatas na dapat may sariling paninindigan. Balang araw ay babalikan natin ang pagkatatataong ito at mananugot tayo sa ating mga kababayan. Ang atibang ipamamana sa kanila, sa ating mga kababayan, ang atibang ipamamana ay buhay o kamatayan. Mister Speaker, I vote no to the death penalty dahil gusto ko pong maging malaya at gusto ko pong maging mapagpalaya.
Banal.
Honorable Banal, you have three minutes. Explain your vote.
Salamat po. Hindi po ako nakapaginterplicate dahil pitulam po 'yung hinayaan. Baka pwede pong bigyan niyo ako ng extrang oras. Tumututol po ang ikatlong distrito ng Quezon City sa umiiral na culture of death. Tumututol po kami sa death penalty. Sa dami po ng problema ng ating sistema ng hustisya, pati po sa law enforcement, malamang inosente at mula sa hanay ng mahihirap ang mapapatay ng estado. Ayon po sa Ateneo Law Journal, halos 1,500 cases ng death penalty, 907 cases po ang ni-review ng Supreme Court, at 651 cases po ang nabigyan ng mas mababang sentencia. Kaya nga po, ayon sa Ateneo Law Journal, ang Supreme Court po mismo, they express a grave concern on imposing capital punishment. Ayon po sa Philippine Center for Investigative Journalism, dito po sa mga death penalty convictions na ito, 645 cases were changed from death penalty to imprisonment, 456 cases were sent to the Court of Appeals, 37 cases for further investigation, at 69 cases po acquitted. Isipin na lang po natin kung hindi naacquit 'yung 69 na taong napatawan ng kamatayan eh hindi lang po isang buhay katulad ng sinabi kanina o hindi 69 na inosenteng Pilipino ang pinatay ng estado. Huwag po kayong malungkot, hindi lang naman po sa Pilipinas, sublime at unreliable ang sistema ng hustisya. Pati po sa mas developed na countries katulad ng Estados Unidos, kunsan merong Innocence Project USA. Nakumitted sila na pawalang sala po 'yung mga na-execute na mali naman sa pamamagitan po ng DNA testing. Katulad po ng kaso ni Claude Jones na in-execute nung year 2000. Nagfile po ang Innocence Project nung year 2007 at napatunayan 'yung ebidensyang ginamit po sa kanyang execution ay mali. Hindi po niya herestrant dyan 'yung buho kundi po galing sa victim. Maskipo sa United Kingdom, ginawang speaker, 'yung pong kaso ni Timothy Evans na sa Nating Hill pa naman 'yung magandang movie, dun po nangyari. Sixteen years later po, napakataas siyang ma-execute na confirm na hindi po siya 'yung pumatay dun sa kanyang sariling anak kung hindi 'yung kapitbahay nila at siya po ay nabigyan ng posthumous pardon. Ito pong kaso na to nagkaroon po ng strong influence sa abolition of capital punishment sa United Kingdom. Karamihan po ng mabibiktima ng death penalty ay 'yung mga mismong dapat nating protektahan, 'yung pong mga inosente at 'yung pong mahihirap. Ayon po sa CHR Resolution, itong 1997, ang karamihan po ng napapatawan ng death penalty ay 'yung mga nasa lower classes po, lower classes ng lipunan. Ang practical effect po ng death penalty ay discrimination laban sa mahihirap. Gusto po nating isabatas ang death penalty upang mabawasan ang krimenen at ang mga kriminal, pero magkamalilim po tayo ng isang beses, ang estado na mismo ang pumapatay ng inosente, ang estado na po mismo ang magiging kriminal. Hindi natin kailangan pong pumatay ng ating kapwa Pilipino upang mabawasan ang krimen sa ating bansa. Ang mas kailangan po natin ay isang mas reliable at mas credible na law enforcement at justice system. Mister Speaker, ayusin po muna natin ang sistema ng hustisya upang masigurado po natin ang mapaparusahan ay ang mga nagkasala, hindi po ang mga inosente. We say no to the death penalty, Mister Speaker, and we say no to the prevailing culture of death.
Barbers. Barsaga. Matawil. Patokabe. Bautista Mandigan. Bellaro. Belmonte Peliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher.
Honorable Belmonte is recognized to deliver his explanation.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. First off, Mister Speaker, I would like to read a letter sent to me by a constituent of mine from barangay Coliat. Honorable Belmonte, I am writing to you to express my support in your stand against the passing of the death penalty. Please hold strong and be steadfast in your argument. Admittedly, a lot of people in government right now are so myopic. Hence, I am absolutely grateful for those few who remain to have foresight necessary for the genuine development of this nation. In behalf of your constituents who can see right through our crippled judiciary, thank you for representing us. In behalf of all those imprisoned for a fault they never committed, thank you for being against the imposition of the most cruel penalty. In behalf of those who are properly imprisoned, who are properly imprisoned, most probably due to their circumstances, that of intense poverty, as if society can blame them for putting them under circumstances when they... putting them under circumstances when they constructively lost their freedom of choice, thank you for acknowledging that the only way to lessen criminality is to provide jobs. Honorable Speaker, I have a very high respect for this institution. I cannot fathom the idea that our 17th Congress, through its foresight, would take blood in its own hands. I cannot accept the thought that we, the members of the House of Representatives, will allow fellow human beings to be killed by our own government. Stripped of its nomenclature as a penalty, imposing the death penalty is allowing state-sponsored killings. A person killed by the state in its death chambers is blood in my hands, Mr. Speaker. It is blood in our hands. I refuse the idea that I allowed our government to kill in my name, in our name. I am here as the representative of my constituents, mostly law-abiding, tax-paying citizens. Approving the imposition of death penalty is putting an additional burden on the shoulders of our people. Taxpayers would pay for every death through hanging, lethal injection, or firing squad. I resist the idea that my constituents would be made to pay taxes to maintain and operate our death chambers. Mr. Speaker, I stand firm in my personal conviction that what we are doing right now is an act of injustice. In the words of the philosopher Plato, "He who commits injustice is even made more wretched than he who suffers it." Mr. Speaker, I voted no during the deliberations of House Bill 4727 of the Justice Committee last December 7. I voted no on the bill's second reading last week. Today, I remain firm against the imposition of the death penalty, and I voted no. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Beazon.
Artis, you have three minutes to explain your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Heinous crime in our country continuously remain unabated over the years, mostly due to uncontrolled drug trafficking. We cannot afford to see more lives wasted, more futures destroyed by big-time drug syndicates. Operating in our country, our OFWs who are working so hard for their family deserve to know that their own government will be just as tough on drug traffickers as most of other countries are. Pinagtatawanan at pinapalusutan lang po tayo na mga foreign drug syndicates na ginagawan transshipment ang Pilipinas at ginagamit ang ating mga kababayan bilang drug couriers sa ibang bansa. Tulad po sa kaso ni Mary Jane Beloso, 'yung sangkot na African national na nahuli sa Pilipinas, hindi man lang natin naipakulo at naparusahan. Kung may death penalty, sila na mismo ang iiwas sa Pilipinas, at ang mahalaga 'yung mga kawani ng pamahalaan na nasa bulsa ng mga drug lords ay maari na ring maparusahan ng kamatayan. Moreover, it is my desire and conviction to include other heinous crimes such as rape with murder, large scale, human trafficking, child pornography, and plunder in the coverages of the bill. What these crimes do not only to direct victims themselves but also to their families and their entire society is equivalent to death. The possible approval of this bill must ensure not just reinstatement of capital punishment but likewise reformations in our criminal justice system. Our children deserve a peaceful and orderly society, Mr. Speaker. This vote for them, as I said a while ago, I vote yes for House Bill 4727. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Beazon.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Beazon is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, during my campaign for my first term in Congress in 2001, I made it clear to the electorate that my agenda included an anti-illegal drugs advocacy and that I believe that government must take a strong and firm stand against this menace to society. The people of Montinlupa granted me the privilege to represent them for the first time in the 12th Congress. It was in that Congress that I was one of the authors of the Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002, a comprehensive piece of legislation which laid down the blueprint of how government was to wage its fight against illegal drugs and prescribe death as a penalty for certain violations. In the passage of that law, the authors of the House of Representatives and the members of the House approved the same, subsequently passed by the Senate and signed into law by the President on June 7, 2002. While its constitutionality was questioned at the Supreme Court, the highest court of the land upheld the law and it continued to be in effect although a moratorium on executions was issued by the executive. In 2004, I was elected once more by the people of Montinlupa City to represent them in the 13th Congress. On June 24, 2006, Republic Act 9346 was passed by the legislature prohibiting the imposition of capital punishment in the Philippines. I voted against that measure, maintaining my position that drug trafficking deserved the ultimate penalty available under the constitution of this republic. For a third time, I was again given the privilege to represent the lone district of Montinlupa City in the 14th Congress. During that period, there were several incidents that highlighted the country's drug problems such as the Subic Bay Drug Hall, which was touted as the largest shabu seizure at the time, the raid of Dinagilian La Union Drug Laboratory, the discovery of the Santa Cruz Laguna Drug Lab, and the infamous Alabang Boys Drug Case, which this house even investigated with the pideya alleging that the accused offered a 50 million peso bribe to the prosecution. On July 19, 2009, I was informed by reliable sources that the daughter of a high-profile anti-narcotics officer was kidnapped. It was believed that the kidnapping was a retaliation by drug lords against the effective operation led by the anti-narcotics officer. The following day, the story became headline news with additional information that the daughter was allegedly not only kidnapped but was also drugged and raped. That story moved me particularly because the narcotics officer was personally known to me. In my blog, I wrote, "This crime is so heinous, so sinister, and diabolical that it takes a particularly evil mind to conceive and do it. It is obviously a premeditated act meant to hit back at the person who has been effective in foiling the proliferation of the illegal drug trade. It was meant to hurt the agent in that instead of merely killing the victim, they let the child live through a harrowing experience and did things to her that only a sick mind will consciously think of doing. Believing that we had not shown our firm resolve to punish those in the business of sowing misery in the lives of Filipinos, particularly the young, I filed the House Bill Number 5714, proposing to reimpose the death penalty for drug trafficking back then in 2009. Even the Speaker of the House at that time stated his inclination to support my bill, although it was not in the priority of the administration at that time, understandably because it was that same administration which repealed capital punishment just three years earlier. Now I return to the House of Representatives in the 17th Congress, given another opportunity by my constituents to represent them. My view about illegal drugs remain the same. It is a menace to society, it brings about moral decay, it fuels crime and brings misery in the life of anyone and everyone who gets entangled in its web. With recent revelations about drug operations inside the New Belibid Prison, I am not surprised that the current administration with its stance against illegal drugs and the population in general are taking an alarmed look at the extent of the drug problem. But let me say that these revelations are not new to this representation whose district plays host to the New Belibid Prison. As far back as my first term in 2001, there had already been rumors going around about the illicit trade going on inside the secure prison walls. That is one of the reasons why I have consistently...
May I remind you, Honorable Beazon?
I'm winding up, Your Honor. That is one of the reasons why I have consistently taken this stance over the years. The Constitution allows capital punishment for compelling reasons involving heinous crimes. The continued proliferation of the illegal drug trade with its devastating effects is a compelling reason, and the resulting crimes are heinous. I voted yes for a bill which targeted to punish certain crimes involving illegal drugs. Under the authority of the people of Montinlupa City for me to be in this chamber, I vote yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Biliones is recognized.
In a world where discord exists, we have the rules to put things back into place. In times where our goods become scars, we seek out assistance to replenish our supplies. In times of injustice, we strive to uphold the role of law. But the interest of common welfare, would it be fair to achieve it at the expense of the lives of imperfect citizens? I dare say that we cannot allow it, not in this lifetime. I proudly submit my objection against the death penalty bill in three levels. First, Mr. Speaker, our criminal justice system's priority is reformation rather than elimination of the undesirables. I recognize the importance of providing the proportionate penalty for the gravest of crimes. But to take a person's life is not only a crime in itself but also contrary to the principles that we have protected and adapted for so long. A convict, despite all of his infirmities, is still a citizen of our country which the state is mandated to protect. To take an eye for an eye is not only barbaric but also counterproductive. In our imperfect and cruel world, only the rich can afford the best legal defenders. How about those who cannot even afford their daily sustenance? Who will effectively defend them? Second, Mr. Speaker, our state policies mandate the protection of life. If you look at the Constitution, one of which main focus is to safeguard the lives of citizens without discrimination or unreasonable distinction. In the eyes of the law, we are all equal, and as equals, they must be afforded their basic human and constitutional rights. I understand the sentiments of the victims and their families. In fact, I share their outrage towards the proliferation of unforgivable acts of violence. But to take the culprit's life will not return what was lost nor make the situation as bearable as it would be. Peace will never be achieved by having retribution as a solution. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, and perhaps the most compelling factor is that the Philippines is a predominantly Catholic country. As the largest Catholic country in Asia, we cannot deny the impact and influence of religion in our lives, with all due respect to the separation of the church and the state. But as a congressman, I must represent the best interest of my constituents, to legalize killing by means of death penalty and will not run counter to the roots of which our identity as Filipinos stand but also corrupt the sanctity of life as we know it. With all these reasons, Mr. Speaker, I strongly oppose the adoption of the death penalty bill. There are other alternatives to help our present situation. A peaceful and productive solution which do not involve the taking of the Filipinos' life just to make an example. What the Lord gave us, the Lord take it. With that, Mr. Speaker, I voted no. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Your Honors.
Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado.
Honorable Bordado is recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
May I remind those who wish to explain their votes to follow the three-minute rule?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for two fundamental reasons. First, to make sure that the voice of my constituents in the third district of Camarinesur is heard in this hall. And second, to make sure that I will be making a decision truly reflective of their collective stand on the issue now before us. I am here to represent my district. In our scheme of things, I am an agent, my constituents are my principals, Mr. Speaker. My district is composed of Naga City and seven municipalities. Aside from being the seat of the archdiocese of Gacerez, Naga is the home of the centuries-old image of our Lady of Penyafrancia, the patroness of Bicolandia. The Penyafrancia devotion, Mr. Speaker, is considered as the biggest Marian devotion in Asia, if not in the entire world. In other words, Mr. Speaker, you don't have to be a political science genius to determine the leaning of my constituents insofar as the proposal to reimpose the death penalty is concerned. A problem arises, Mr. Speaker, when an agent no longer represents the interest of his principals. That was why I had, over the last few weeks, been consulting my constituents on the proposed bill. I conducted rapid appraisal surveys, I even directed my district office to conduct a series of focus group discussions. For my part, Mr. Speaker, I pondered since day one of the debate on the arguments being put forward by the proponents and of course by the interpolators. Specifically, Mr. Speaker, I listened intently to the pronouncements on international laws and treaties vis a vis the reimposition of the death penalty in the Philippines. I did my own research, reading materials on the topic. I also attended lectures conducted by experts. Still, a number of questions lingered in my mind, so I even mastered enough courage to be listed as one of the interpolators. Today, Mr. Speaker, after thoroughly examining my conscience, carefully weighing the arguments for and against the bill, and intently studying the comments and feedbacks from my constituents in the third district of Camarinesur, I am voting against the reimposition of the death penalty. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I would just like to take this opportunity to remind our members that they may submit their comments or explanations to their vote to our records. So to the Secretary General to be included in our records in order to save time, Mr.
You continue the...
Bravo, Anthony.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Bravo, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleague, mga kababayan, good afternoon. I vote yes to this bill because it can save innocent lives. A government that will not put its most inveterate legal offenders to death will find its citizens at the mercy of wicked dissolute men who find nothing wrong with putting innocent individuals to death. I vote yes to that penalty because it will be the first step to the long process of overhauling our justice system. Justice to the victims is counted by the minute, and every minute delay is tantamount to justice denied. A famous line says, "In the face of doubt, the people's voice should be the final arbiter." I vote yes because this is the clamor of the sector I am representing in this august chamber. We are supportive of the president's war against illegal drugs. We are hungry for a positive change, and we want it now, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. We are hungry for a positive change, and we want it now, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Bravo, Maria Vida. Brosas.
Ginong speaker, mga kapwako...
You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ginong speaker, mga kapwako mambabatas, ang kinitawang ito mula sa Gabriela Women's Party ay mariing tumutol sa pagpasa ng panukalang muling buhay ng parusang kamatayan sa ating bansa. Ang mga legal na proseso sa ating bansa ay napakagastos, bukod pa sa napakabagal. Kalimitang napapawalang sala ang mga nasasakdal na may kakayahang magbayad para sa serbisyo ng mga mahuhusay na abugado. May mga nasasakdal sa kasalukuyang bunga ng maling mga paratang at marami din sa kanilang mahihirap na walang access sa abugado. Kung kaya't sila'y nabubulok sa kulong nang hindi man lang umuusad ang mga pagdinig o kaya'y hindi man lang nadidinig ang kanilang mga kaso. Sa kasalukuyan, naabot sa halos apat naraan ang bilang ng mga bilanggong politikal na sinampahan ng mga gawa-gawang kaso. Sa kasalukuyan din, may mga ulat ang karapatan isang pambansang organisasyon ng karapatang pantao na nabibilang ang ilang mga aktibista sa mga probinsya sa drug watch list ng PNP. Hindi malayong gamitin itong pamamaraan upang takutin, pagbantaan, punlaan ng droga ang mga kasapi ng mga makabayang organisasyon. Nililigalisan ito ang political persecution and execution sa hanay ng mga organisadong mamamayan. Pangunahin sa lahat, mataas ang pagpapahalaga ng Gabriela Women's Party sa buhay ng tao at pagkilala sa karapatang pantao. Ang problema sa droga at kriminalidad ay malalim na nakaugat sa dekadekada ng kagutuman, kawalan ng trabaho, at kabuhayan. Idagdag pa natin ang sistema ng hudikatura sa ating bansa, mabagal, masalimuot, at napakagastos. Kahit pa sabihing pambayad utang sa nagawang kasalanan ang layunin ng panukalang ito, malinaw na mas malaking hamon para sa atin sa kasalukuyan ang pagsasaayos ng ating justice system. Ang mapabilis ang mga nakaimbudong mga kaso sa mga korte, pagiging episyente ng mga imbestigasyon at pagdinig sa mga kaso, ang mga itupusan na ang ating pinakamainam na pagtuunan ng pansin. Saganang akin, ito ay upang maglingkod sa masa ang batas ng bansa. At hindi para sa iilan lamang na may kapangyarihan at kayamanan. Ginong speaker, colleagues, hindi po death penalty ang solusyon. The defects of our judicial and legal processes that spawn injustice and impunity cannot be cured by the reimposition of the death penalty. On the contrary, the defect and festering practices in the judiciary will worsen. Muli, ginong speaker, tutulpo ang representasyong ito sa panukalang batas na ito.
Bulut Magtang. Cagas. Calderon. Calixto Robiano.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You may proceed to explain your vote.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, my distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. After a series of consultations and meetings with the different sectors in our city, which I started as early as November of 2016, and after the survey I commissioned just last month to get the sentiments of my constituents, majority, if not all, favored the reimposition of the death penalty. Being their lone representative and voice here in Congress, I bring with me today the position of my people. Therefore, I voted yes in favor of House Bill Number 4727. Thank you.
Casilau.
Salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ang kinatawan ko ito na binubuo ng mga maralitang lungsod at sektor, mariin naming ni rehistro ang aming pagtutol o botong no sa third reading ng House Bill 4727, Death Penalty Bill, bunso'd ng mga sumusunod na batayan. Una, ito po ay kontra mahihirap o anti-poor. Majority of those who were put to the death row until 2006, when it was abolished, came from the poor sectors. They are those who earn less than 10,000 pesos a month and work at the factories, construction, transport, services, and sales in agriculture. It was obvious that they have no capacity to defend themselves in front of the court. Ano po ang maasahan ng ating maralitang mamamayan? Kung ang pawlawyer ay umahandle ng mahigit limang libong kaso, what quality of defense can they afford or can they expect from a pawlawyer who handles 5,000 cases? Pangalawa, ito po ay panganib sa mamamayan. Karaniwan na ang kaso ng framework kung saan ang mga tinuturing na suspect ay tinatamaan, tinatamnan ng mga ebedensya, at sa panukalang ito, ang ilang gramo diperensya sa ebedensya ay mga hulugan ng bitay o reklusyon perpetua. Pangatlo, isang panganib din ito sa mga aktibistang nakikibaka para sa mga fundamental na reporma sa ating lipunan. Sa kasalukuyan, kariniwan na ang mga framework laban sa mga aktibista ay nangyayari. Karaniwan silang tinatamnan ng mga ebedensya, kasabay ang mga gawa-gawang affidavit o mga gawa-gawang kaso. Ngayong hindi pa napapalaya ang mga bilanggong politikal, walang saysay na paigtingin ang mga parusa. Dahil ang mismong prosecution ay hindi patas at vulnerable sa mga maniobrang legal ng mismong mga ehen te ng estado sa loob ng DND, AFP, at PNP. Hindi po garantiya na mababawasan ang krimen bukod pa kung ang mga law enforcement agencies ang mismong gumagawa ng krimeng ito. Si Pangulong Duterte na mismo ang nagsabi, tatlong porsyento hanggang apat napong porsyento, o 48,000 out of the 160,000 na mga membro ng PNP ay corrupt, skaloag o sangkot sa ibat-ibang mga sindikato. Kung maipapasa ang death penalty, walang makakapigil sa 48,000 na skaloag na police na ito na magkamal na malaking yaman kapalit ang pagkakaligtas ng mga suspect sa mga parusa. Kahit naipatupad ito, nung 1999, hindi ito nagbunga ng pagbaba ng krimen bagkus tumaas pa nga ng 15% ayon sa CHR. Panghuli po, hindi ito ang kagyat na pangangailangan oppressing issues ng ating mamamayan. Sa pagupo ni Pangulong Duterte, naghihintay ng fundamental na pagbabago ang mamamayan sa ating bansa. Partikular na ang mga programa at patakaran mag-aangat sa socio-economic standing ng mahihirap sa ating bansa.
May I remind you, gentlemen, you have three minutes.
salit pagsusulong ng mga karapatan ng mamamayan sa lupa, kabuhayan, at mga serbisyong panlipunan. Kaya po, ang simbolo po itong nakikita ninyo na taas kamo, simbolo ng pagtutol, paglaban. Ito rin po ang nakikita nyo sa mga aktibista at maging kay Pangulong Duterte. Pero ang boto po ng anak pawis, I know.
Astelo. Castro Franz. Castro Predemil. Katamco. Caso...
You have three minutes to explain your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation voted no to House Bill 4727, which aims to restore the death penalty. I, together with my fellow Solons in the Macamayan Black, vehemently oppose this House bill because it is anti-poor, a historic tool for suppressing political dissent, prone to abuse by corrupt police, military, and other state agents, and ultimately an ineffective deterrent against criminality rooted in mass poverty and an unjust social system. Also, I am opposing the railroading that happened last time. It is unacceptable. We are all elected by the people. We owe them every decision we make. This is not a game. The bill has the utmost seriousness due to the matter of life and death. As mandated by the Constitution, we are a democratic state, but due to the railroading of this bill, the Congress blatantly killed such democracy. The railroading reveals that there are willing to defy their own rules and the constitutional mandate just to favor the government's interest. Death penalty targets the poor, oppressed, and marginalized who cannot afford adequate legal representation, which violates their basic rights due to process, given the existing inequality in the society combined with our flawed and corrupt justice system. The reimposition of death penalty will inflict another series of injustice to the poor and marginalized. They will experience continuous injustices. We all know that those who are poor in life must be more on law. But with such penalty, the poor will be both poor in life and in law. Death penalty is a tool of state repression in the context of fascism against the people. Our history tells of the executions imposed on Filipinos who challenged colonialism and tyranny. During the Spanish colonial rule, the Gumbursa and Doctor Sarisar were both sentenced to public execution in an attempt to quell the growing challenge to Spanish authority. Subsequently, the American colonizers retained the death penalty and used it to execute Filipino freedom fighters such as Macario Sakay. The dictator Ferdinand Marcos imposed the death penalty also in the name of deterring criminality, but was primarily used to deter the growing rebellion and social unrest under martial rule. In today's context, the proposed return of the death penalty is disturbing given that hundreds of political prisoners are charged with trump-up crimes which could now be punishable by death under House Bill 4727. The death penalty could once be used to heighten repression against the people. The death penalty is prone to abuse by corrupt police, military, and other forces and other state agents. The broadened coverage of the heinous crime provides more opportunities for extortion, planting of evidence, trump-up cases, and other crimes. Lastly, it is ineffective deterrent crime rates are still high. By 1999, the year that Leo Chagarewa executed, the national crime volume instead of abating ironically increased by 15.3%. The reimposition of death penalty violates the Second Protocol of the International Covenant on the Civil and Political Rights. Again, I believe that the justice and penal system must be informed and rehabilitated rather than punitive and anti-life. However, this will not happen as long as the government remain in its rotten stage and mass poverty and social injustices prevail.
Castro Predemil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Cerapica, Griles, Chaves, Chipeco, Coco, Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cordono, Costelan, Prisolgo, Kua, Porresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza.
The Honorable Daza is recognized to explain his vote.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, I shall submit a written explanation, my vote, and request that be inserted into the record.
De Jesus.
Honorable De Jesus is recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, in ni rehistro ko ang pagtutol sa pagpapanumbalik ng death penalty. Maging batay sa aking aktwal na nakaranasan sa pagtulong sa mga biktimang humingin ng tulong na suporta sa Gabriela, nakita ko kung paanong nababaluktot ang hustisia pabor sa mga nasa poder. Sa mga ilang interpolators na nabigyan ng pagkakataong makapagtanong, hanggang ngayon ay hindi sapat ang mga sagot na tulad din sa aking tanong. Ano nga ba ang compelling reason at kailangan nating muli ibalik ang parusang kamatayan? Lalo akong nababahala kung idadagdag pa ang binabanggit na layunin ng panukalang batas na tukot heinous crimes which are repugnant to the common standards of decency and morality in a just civilized and ordered society. Para sa representasyong ito, kailangan magkalinawan muna tayo kung ang lipunan nga ba ay just o makatarungan. Kung pagbabatayan ang umiiral na kalagayan ng marami nating kababayan dulot ng krisis sa ekonomiya, ang larawang tatampo ay kabalin tunaan ng lipunang makatarungan. Ilan kababayan natin ang pudpod na ang mga sapinsa pa sa kahahanap ng trabaho? Ilan sa mga mapapalad na may trabaho ang may katiyakan sa tenure? At napakalaking problema ang sahod na talaga namang hindi sumasapat kahit man lang sa kanilang batayang pangangailangan? Isip-isip ng mahaparaan. Forced migration is another solution to their problem where higher risks are in their midst. Halimbawa na lang ang labingpitong libong kababayan nating na wala ng trabaho sa Saudi Arabia. Ilan pamilyang apektado nito ang nangangailangan ng tulong? Kung pamilyar tayo sa salitang kapit sa patalim, siguro nating mahuhugisan bakit ang mahihirap ay nasasangkot sa droga? Ang vulneribilidad para gumamit at makalimot dahil aburiduna sa mga problema kinakaharap? Ang magtula para pagkakitaan sa kabila ng kinakaharap na panganib o mas masahol pa? Maging drug mule knowingly or mas marami biniktima ang kanilang kawalang kamuwangan? Mr. Speaker, hindi bang mas dapat alamin sino ang nasa likod ng nagpapakalat ng droga? Sino ang kumikita ng limpak-limpak dito habang sinisira ang maraming buhay at pamilya? Dito lamang sa umiiral na programang War on Drugs, ilan ang mga sindikato? O malalaking taong nahuli o nabunyag na mga sangkot? Kung ihahambing sa bilang mga napatay na karamihan ay mula sa mahihirap na komunidad? Kung umiiral ang just society, bakit pagdating sa sistema ang paghukom maraming kasong hindi umaandar kapag sangkot ang mahihirap para ipagtanggol ang kanilang sarili? Nakakakilabot ng tingnan ng mga detention centers sa dami ng bilanggong karamihan ay ilan taon nang hindi gumagalaw ang kaso? Ang mga mayayamang sindikato naman na kahit nasa bilanguan na ay patuloy pa ring nagkakamal ng pera mula sa droga ay hindi nasasawata? Hanggang ngayon, hindi ba kitang-kita ang pag-iral ng culture of impunity? Malinaw para sa amin na kung tayo ay nagahangad ng mas maayos na lipunan. Tama at kaysa kami sa paglaban sa salot na dulot ng droga, pero naniniwala kami na hindi ang parusang kamatayan ang magpapahinto ng krimen na ito. Napakalaki ng ating dapat komponihin sa ating lipunan para sabihing just o umiiral ang katarungan. Kapag ang death penalty ay lumusot bilang drug crime, magiging pinto na rin ito para sa mga amyenda na maaaring magpalawak. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwako kinatawan, patunay kung gaano kabulok ang justice system sa bansa at kung paano nakakalusot sa kabarusahan ng batas ang mga may kapangyarihan. Kahit sa ang angulo tingnan, hindi solusyon ang death penalty sa kabuluhang ito. Ang solusyon ay ang paglalatag ng mga batayan para magkaroon ng makabuluhang pagbabago sa larangan ng ekonomiya, politika, at kultura na ang mayoryaan ang mamamayan ay magtatamasa ng kapayapaan. The total wipeout of all forms of injustices is the only guarantee we can have towards the eradication of crimes. Muli, no ang boto ko.
De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar.
Honorable Del Mar is recognized to explain his vote.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues. Why I voted no? No, because the death penalty just does not work. It does not stop or reduce crime. Reputable studies show no empirical evidence that death penalty deters much less stops crime. No, because given our flawed justice system, often only the poor end up at the death row. No, because errors in assigning blame for crime can happen and have happened, and the death penalty is irreversible. Wrongful execution of the innocent cannot be undone. No, because recusum perpetua or life imprisonment without parole or commutation of sentence could meet the demand for vengeance from the victims. could meet the demand for vengeance from the victims and mete appropriate penalty from society. No, because the methods of execution have been found to be cruel, an unusual punishment, inhuman, and barbaric, and godly, often a passage through torture and pain before death. No, because crime can be waged more effectively in other fronts: law enforcement, prosecution, trial, and penal system by strengthening them and removing the flaws. No, because as of 2015, 140 countries of the world have abolished the death penalty in law or practice. To the Philippines, already a member of that enlightened community of nations that embrace humanity, restoring capital punishment would be a throwback and setback. Which retrogrades, we don't improve. No to impracticality, inhumanity, and ungodliness. I voted no for those reasons, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, and those reasons I have already articulated during the interpolation and debate with the sponsor and much, much more. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and distinguished colleagues.
Del Rosario, Del Rosamontalia, Imapor Abdullah, Imapor Kalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago.
Honorable Elago is recognized to explain her vote.
Mr. Speaker, this representation vehemently opposes the reimposition of death penalty. Death penalty is an all-out offensive against the Filipino people, the poor people whom this government should serve. The reimposition of death penalty will be inimical to the rights and welfare of the people because it will only exacerbate the already corrupted and inequitous justice system. The railroading of House Bill 4727 shows how hell-bent and desperate the Duterte administration is to step into fascist territory without even exhausting debates and arguments and despite the growing opposition of the people. We see this as a desperate attempt of the administration to impose its rule and ensure obedience to its authority in its bid to consolidate power and quell the increasing dissent of the people. The Duterte administration is swiftly resorting to this and other fascist moves such as the institution of mandatory ROTC in senior high school and the revival of the Philippine Constabulary, the lowering of the minimum age of criminal responsibility, and the declaration of an all-out war against the New People's Army. These moves are tantamount to endorsing gross human rights abuses, the grave disregard of civil liberties, and propagating state terrorism. These moves serve to fan the flames of impunity and senseless violence in the country. In fact, Mr. Speaker, even without this bill, death penalty is already in full swing in the countryside under the armed forces of the Philippines' Oplan Kapayapaan, which have only caused people more harm and discord than peace and development. At least 15 civilians were killed in February 2017 alone. Hundreds were displaced and illegally arrested since the president took office. Now we appeal to the good sense of our fellow legislators to backtrack on reimposing the death penalty and stop the all-out war which turns out to be an all-out war against the people. We should focus instead on fostering a justice that heals because a justice that kills is no justice at all. Simply killing of perpetrators will not solve criminality in the drug issue as this pestilence is rooted in the socioeconomic instability that most of our countrymen go through. Araw-araw na lang sa balita 'yung mga nanlaban, sinasabi nila ang kasalanan lang nila, mahirap sila. Yun dapat ang una nating pinagtuto una ng pansin. If we uplift their lives and provide access to quality education and healthcare, provide secure and decent jobs, if we provide the people a way to break away from wrongdoings and drug dependence in a holistic manner, then we can save lives for good. We must protect the right to life and uphold human dignity by addressing extreme poverty, hunger, landlessness, land grabbing, lack of national industries, depressed wages, contractualization, corruption, and inequality that breeds criminality. This is why the GRP and NDFP stocks must be continued, especially with pushing for genuine agrarian reform and national industrialization. These, and not death penalty and fascism, will pave the road towards resolving criminality and safeguarding peace based on justice. Ang death penalty ay hindi sangkap ng kinabukasan na pinapangarap ng mga kabataan. Ang pangarap po namin ay kinabukasan na walang inaapi at pinagsasamantalahan, kinabukasan na may tunay na kalayaan at katarungan. Tuloy-tuloy ang ating paglaban, labanan ang pasismo ng estado, labanan ang all-out war sa mamamayan.
Enverga, Herice.
The Honorable Herice is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, ang aking mariing pagtutol sa reimposisyon ng death penalty ay inaalay ko po sa mga pamilyang na ulila, na mga daang-daang mga kababayan ko sa aking distrito na pinatay ng walang kalaban-laban ng mga pulis na sinasabi nilang lumaban kahit hindi naman. Inaalay ko po ito sa mga pamilya, na mga drug addicts, mga drug peddlers, mga inusente na nagkataon lang na sa lugar ng pinangyarihan ng pagpatay. Inaalay ko din po ito sa mga pamilya na pinatay inambush na mga vigilante kuno pero mga pulis din naman. Kompleto na po ang makinaria pagkatapos ng hapon na ito ng pagpatay ng ating estado. Vigilante, pulis, at ngayon naman, death penalties sa pamagitan ng ating mahauskiado. I vote no, Mr. Speaker, not because it is the party position of the Liberal Party in which I am a proud member. I vote no, not because I belong to the authentic minority. I vote no to the imposition of the death penalty because of my Christian faith. My position in government will last only for a few years, but my faith, my conscience is eternal, Mr. Speaker. Death penalty is against God's commandment, Thou shall not kill, and I do not want to be a participant to an offense against the inviolability of life and dignity of a person. This is being sponsored now by this Berry Chamber. Sinabi ng Panginoon, huwag kang papatay. Hindi niya sinabing huwag kang papatay ng pangit o maganda. Hindi niya sinabing huwag kang papatay ng masama o mabuti. Hindi niya sinabing huwag kang papatay ng ogressman o ng pinakamasamang pusakan. Ang sabi niya, huwag kang papatay. Ang turo ng Panginoon ay mahalin mo ang iyong kapwa. Kapwa, kahit kaaway mo, mahalin mo. We should hate the sins but not the sinners. Iniisip ko po, papaano makakapaglingkod ng isang pamahalaan na hindi ginagalang ang The punishment of God is reformatory and not of vengeance. Pagbabago at hindi paghihiganti. Human society must exemplify God's wisdom through our Berry laws. Mr. Speaker, death penalty is uncivilized, unfair, inequitable in practice. Death penalty is anti-poor. It does not deter violent crimes. Kahit po sampung beses pang patayin ang ipanakot mo sa isang na influensyang ng drugs, papatay pa rin po. Sinisisi po natin, ang dapat natin...
May I remind you, gentlemen, to wind up his speech?
The death penalty denies due process and always is irrevocable. I dedicate my vote to my God, the only one I am ultimately accountable. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Erigel, Hermita Bohain, Escadero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Fred Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon.
Honorable Garin is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, we have tried almost everything. Every form of democratic government, every technocrat's ideas, every decrease and amendment bets, but apparently, the direction of our actions still do not seem to provide necessary solutions. But set in the hopelessness of things and events, I remembered well the words of my poetry teacher, and she said, "There's got to be rain, for it is all sun. Our faces will faint. And there has got to be evil to find out how really good is good. And there has got to be bitterness to be able to taste how sweet is sweet." Mr. Speaker, for every action, there is always an opposite reaction. So when the promise of youth is snuffed out because of insatiable greed, when the future of our country is needlessly put in jeopardy by a few whose desire of gain defeats imagination, when mothers weep because someone needs to accumulate wealth at the expense of his brother Ladies and gentlemen, the equal opposite reaction should be the matter at hand, cosmic law in its most basic form. I vote yes, Mr. Speaker.
Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Gono Cristina, Gomart. The Honorable Gomar is recognized to explain his vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, and my countrymen. Justice is never in advance in the taking of a human life. Morality is never upheld by legalized murder. These were the words of the late Coreta Scott King, civil rights activist, and widow Doctor Martin Luther King, even after her husband was killed by an assassin's bullet. Over the course of the past weeks, this hall has been witness to the impassioned debates on the legality of the reimposition of the capital punishment vis-à-vis the Constitution and international law. We have discussed how it may affect trade, industry, and even the flight of our overseas foreign workers abroad. It is our duty as legislator to enact laws we honestly believe would create a lasting good for humanity as a whole, and to do that, it is only necessary that the laws we enact be consistent with the morals we uphold. In the sponsorship speech of Father Bernas during the deliberations in the 1986 Constitutional Convention, he pointed out that the life should not be destroyed just in the hope that other lives might be saved. More than so, that claims of deterrence had long been debunked. As Father Bernas said, assuming mastery over the life of other man is just too presumptuous for any man. The sanctity of human life transcends class, religion, and political affiliation, a right inherent to all through the natural law. Long before the enactment of our Constitution or the ratification of any treaty, we have already granted our right to life and dignity, not because who we are or what we have done, but because we are humans equal in laws of God and of man. The sanctity of human life is not shared off by any crime, and while we disdain cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment of prisoners, always it that we cannot see the cruelty of taking the very life of a human, a cruelty likewise suffered by the family, the jail guards, and the deciding justices. Furthermore, a prisoner convicted of death penalty spends about 10 to 15 years in prison while waiting for the final decision of the Supreme Court's automatic review. This incarceration of the prisoner on death row for an extensive length of time in itself is already an afflictive punishment separate from the death penalty. The double jeopardy or double punishment suffered by a prisoner on death row amounts to double jeopardy expressly prohibited by our Constitution. Whether it be of the philosophical theory of human life or how it evolved into our modern concept of human right jurisprudence, human life a certain sanctity that is to be preserved and protected. We no longer live in a society ruled by colonial power or an authoritarian regime wherein rights are dismissed and liberties are curtailed. Rather, we live in a society where the rule of law that prevails is one that protects and promotes the inherent rights of our people. As such, I believe that we must direct our focus not on severity...
Honorable Gomar, please wind up your speech, your time is up.
But rather on the certainty of punishment as a true means of deterring crimes. From the capability and integrity of our law enforcers to the lack of prosecutors, lack of court dockets, glaring judicial errors, and inhuman conditions, and malpractices inside our national penitentiaries, these are the defects in our criminal justice system that we have to address. While I share my colleague's passion and resolve in addressing criminality in the country, I am afraid that the measure this bill proposes may lead to irreversible mistakes we could not afford. Today, I vote, as my conscience and morals dictate, I therefore manifest my negative vote to the proposed reimposition of the capital punishment. I vote no to House Bill 4727.
Gomez, Gonzaga.
Mr. Chair, I would like to explain my yes vote by discussing...
Honorable Gonzaga, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, by discussing the following issues. First, whether or not House Bill 427, 4727, the death penalty bill if enacted into law will violate the ICCPR. The answer is no. President Corazon Aquino ratified the ICCPR on October 23, 1986. Dibatasan Pambansa did not make a concurrence in the ratification made by the president of the ICCPR simply because dibatasan was abolished... of the ICCPR, simply because dibatasan was abolished by virtue of Proclamation Number Three signed by President Aquino establishing a revolutionary government. ICCPR could not have attained the status of a treaty, thus it has no binding effect here in our Philippine jurisdiction. On the other hand, assuming ICCPR is a legitimate treaty, still HB 4727, if enacted into law, will not violate the ICCPR. Article 6, Paragraph 2 of the same states, quote, "In countries which have not abolished the death penalty, sentence of death may be imposed only for the most serious crimes." And this provision was interpreted by the Human Rights Committee by issuing General Comment Number 6 dated July 27, 1982, stating that, "While it follows from Article 6, Paragraph 2 to Paragraph 6 that state parties are not obliged to abolish the death penalty totally, they are obliged to limit its use and in particular to abolish it for other than the most serious crimes." Unquote. Father Joaquin Bernas, in his book Philippine Constitution Comprehensive Reviewers, said, "Article 6, Paragraph 2 of the covenant explicitly recognizes that capital punishment is an allowable limitation on the right to life, subject to the limitation that it may be imposed for the most serious crimes." Unquote. If death penalty bill if enacted into law will violate ICCPR, why did the Constitutional Convention delegates, fully aware of the ICCPR, allowed and provided for this Section 19, Article 3 of the 1987 Constitution, which states, quote, "Neither shall death penalty be imposed unless for compelling reasons involving heinous crimes the Congress hereafter provides for it." Unquote. Second issue, Mr. Speaker, whether or not the death penalty bill if enacted into law will violate the Second Optional Protocol to the ICCPR. The Second Optional Protocol to the ICCPR is not a treaty nor an international agreement because the ratification of the president did not have the concurrence of at least two-thirds of all members of the Senate as required by Section 21, Article 7 of our Constitution. Article 1, Paragraph 1 of the Second Optional Protocol states, quote, "No one within the jurisdiction of the state party to the present protocol shall be executed." Unquote. The oppositors focused their arguments in this section alone without harmonizing it with Article 2, Paragraph 1 of the same, which states, quote, "No reservation is admissible to the present protocol except for a reservation made at the time of ratification or accession that provides for the application of the death penalty." Unquote. The correct presentation of provision should be, "No one within the jurisdiction of the state party to the present protocol shall be executed except for a reservation--
Honorable Gonzaga, you have exhausted your--
I will just wind up, Mr. Speaker.
Please do so.
--made at the time of the ratification or accession that provides for the application of the death penalty. The point is, did the Philippines make a reservation at the time of the ratification on November 20, 1987? The answer is yes. At the time of the ratification made by the president, the existing constitution is the 1987 Constitution, the present one. Section 19, Article 3 provides, "Neither shall death penalty be imposed unless for compelling reasons involving heinous crimes the Congress hereafter provides for it." Unquote. This provision exactly serves as the Philippines' reservation to the Second Optional Protocol. Lastly, Mr. President, whether the death penalty is cruel, unconstitutional, excessive, and so on. The Supreme Court had ruled and unchangingly answered this issue in the negative in the cases of Harden versus Director, People versus Limako, People versus Camano, People versus Puda, People versus Marcos, and People versus Itzagaray. Therefore, this explains my yes vote, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herreradi, Hopper, Alosjos, Javier, Ho, Honghun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman.
Honorable Lagman is recognized to deliver his explanation.
Mr. Speaker, three minutes would be too short for the explanation of my dissenting vote. I shall therefore summarize my reasons and submit the full text for inclusion in the journal. Let me start by commending 53 colleagues who voted against the reimposition of the death penalty, 54 including my negative vote. I salute them for their courage in defying threats and pressures from the House leaders and remaining steadfast in promoting and protecting human rights. I truly respect and admire them. I submit two overriding reasons among others for voting against House Bill Number 4727. One, the imposition of capital punishment is an open defiance of our irrevocable commitment not to impose the death penalty as a state party to the Second Optional Protocol to the International Convention on Civil and Political Rights. We undertook under the protocol not to execute within our jurisdiction anyone. Significantly, the Philippines became a state party to the protocol in 2007, a year after the country abolished the death penalty and the Republic Act Number 4346. Our ratification of the protocol did not include any specific reservation, Mr. Speaker. International jurisprudence, covenants, and authorities and equivocally declare that no country can use its domestic law, including its constitution, to renege on or violate its treaty obligations. This is consistent with the constitutional principle that the Philippines adopt the generally accepted principles of international law as part of the law of the land. And the highest law of the land is the Constitution. Number two, the 1987 Constitution abolished death penalty. However, it allowed the Congress to reimpose it for compelling reasons on heinous crimes. These two stringent conditions are separate but conquering. The proponents have failed to comply with the constitutional prerequisites. No compelling reasons were shown why the death penalty must be reimposed on drug-related offenses as the maximum penalty. The death penalty, Mr. Speaker, is an abhorrent punishment. It forecloses the reformation of the convict. It victimizes the poor. It is not the solution to criminality. It is not the answer to poverty and social injustice. It debases the right to life. Pope Francis has declared that the inviolability of life or the sanctity of life extends to the criminal. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Lanete, Laogan, Esatin, Leation.
Leation is--Honorable Leation, may I proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I explain, of course, I voted yes for the passage of the death penalty bill for two reasons. But prior to that, let me explain first my preliminary statement. Walking to the halls of Congress and being a part of it, for my experience, has always was not actually a walk in the park. But during the time that I was given the chance and opportunity to be interviewed at CNN, and when Congress was accused of being a heavy members of puppets, I think I would like to take exception. We must realize always in our life that every person has his own life and journey to take. And we must always be remembered that every member in the House has his always role to take. We must always remember that under the Constitution, the House is an independent department of the government inasmuch as the members of the House are actually independent also. I voted yes primarily because I would like to remember the time when I voted for the speakership. I do not know the Honorable Speaker from ADAM, but when I was asked if I will vote for the speaker, I voted yes, principally because we have a new administration. And in fact, it was even said that we deserve the people we elect. Now, in order to give the chance to this new administration to have new programs, there must be a cooperation of the part of Congress. You must understand where I am coming from, being a former local chief executive of a certain city. When our city became so successful, I would like to thank, of course, members of council for always being supportive of good programs. Now, I have voted yes for personal reasons and for personal conviction. I am a loyal by profession, borders about 20 years after passing the bar. I would like also to tell you that in my lifetime, I was a seminarian, short of being a priest. So if you would understand, morality and upholding the law will always be a mixed complication. But definitely, regardless of the influence of the House leadership, regardless of the partisan, I am voting yes because it is my personal conviction. Why? I must understand that this is a constitutional guarantee provided for under the Constitution. Number one, it is for compelling reason. How can you imagine? Filipinos, more than 1 million, are surrendered is because of Oplantokhang. And if you have to raise it times five, member of the families, almost half of this country, are being victimized by this kind of crime. It is constitutionally guaranteed because there is a compelling reason. And second, crimes related to drugs probably for me are not no longer debatable. Ang sabi po ng iba, immoral daw mag-sentencianan death penalty. Nakakaawa raw 'yung mamamatay. Pero I have known people, feminists, who have been victimized by heinous crimes. Hindi ba tayo naawa sa kanila? Ang akin lang po sinasabi, why it is morally right, probably not morally right, to sentence a convict to death? I think for me, and I do believe, it is more reprehensible and immoral to let the murderer live when there is someone who is dead because of these heinous crimes.
May I remind you, Honorable Leation--
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Lastly, ang lagi ko pong sinasabi, he must have trust in the judiciary. Pinataasan natin sweldo ng mga judges, marami tayong creations ng prosecutors, marami tayong creations ng PAO. I think we have ample security and safeguards in the justice system. And lastly, sabi ko nga ho, kung ito ay 21 crimes, I would have voted no. Gusto ko pa nga idagdag 'yung iba pa, rape with homicide. But definitely, at the end of the day, I would like always to be remembered that in these critical times of our lives, making critical decisions, I would like always remember my mother when she was still alive. Ang sabi sa akin, in those critical parts of your life, when critical decisions are to be made, you just have to pray, and you must be your own person, you must be your own man. And for this reason, Mr. Speaker, I would like to reiterate, in behalf of the First District of Oriental Mindoro, this representation is voting yes for the House bill regarding death penalty. Maraming salamat po.
Lee, Limkaychong, Lobregat, Lopez Benhar, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Mahapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangadatus Uharto, Mangadatus Ahid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado.
Honorable Mercado is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This law is a very good law, Mr. Speaker. It is a declared policy of the state to foster peace and order, ensure obedience to its authority, and protect life. In the interest of justice, it says here, public order and the role of law, the need to rationalize and harmonize the penal sanctions. Congress finds compelling reasons to impose the death penalty on heinous crimes committed by offenders who are a continuous threat to society. Let me define heinous crimes. Death penalty is hereby imposed on crimes defined under this act as heinous for being grievous, odious, and hateful offenses, which by reason of their inherent and manifest wickedness, viciousness, atrocity, and perversity are repugnant and outrageous to the common standards and norms of decency and morality in a just, civilized, and orderly society. What are we going to do with people who are importing dangerous drugs? What are we going to do with people who are trading, administering, dispensing, distributing dangerous drugs? What are we going to do with those who are maintaining den, dive, and resort where any dangerous drugs is used or sold in any form? What are we going to do with people who manufacture dangerous drugs? Possessions of drugs, Mr. Speaker, we even give only reclusión perpetua or life sentence, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, upon filing of information, we are even giving them a benefit of the doubt that they will be guilty beyond reasonable doubt, Mr. Speaker. Upon filing of an information, Mr. Speaker, involving any offense punishable by death, the public prosecutor is mandated to forward copies of the said information to the Commission on Human Rights. They are mandated to give notice to interested parties, including the integrated bar of the Philippines and religious and civic organizations, and it has to convene a special-- the accused is given a special panel composed of senior public attorneys to handle the automatic appeal or to assist the accused in death penalty cases without prejudice to the exercise by the Office of the Solicitor General of its mandate as the people's tribune to avoid a miscarriage of justice.
May I remind you, Honorable Mercado--
The Solicitor General, Mr. Speaker, and the Chief Public Attorney may even recommend to the Office of the President to refrain the accused or the suspension of the execution of the death sentence, Mr. Speaker. There has been a lot of things that has to be done before that sentence will have to be implemented, Mr. Speaker. The judges will also study the circumstances, Mr. Speaker. The judges will also study the circumstances, Mr. Speaker. Cases where death penalty shall not be imposed, it cannot be imposed on persons guilty below 18 years old or 70 years old, or there is no majority vote obtained by the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals. And there is also the precedent or executive clemency powers which can be availed by the accused, Mr. Speaker. With this, Mr. Speaker, I believe that we also are God-fearing citizens, we have also a duty to our country. And this is a good contribution by our House of Representatives, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Mirasol, Montoro, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Yerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon.
Honorable Núñez is recognized.
May I explain my vote? Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues of this chamber, consistent with my position during the 13th Congress, this representation remains to be against giving the state the general power to take a person's life as a form of criminal penalty. However, I also recognize the adverse impact of illegal drugs on our society's social fabric. This representation supports the campaign against the proliferation of all forms of illegal drugs in our society. If we are to ensure a brighter tomorrow for our future generations, we have to decisively curb the escalation of illegal drugs in our country now. House Bill 4727 in a way gives us more assurance that drug-related offenses pass through our courts whereby the guilt of the perpetrators or offenders can be better determined and asserted. House Bill 4727, in its present form, is limited to drug-related offenses only. The death penalty is also no longer mandatory as it gives our judges the option to impose the penalty of reclusion perpetua or life imprisonment on the perpetrators. Under our judicial system, a case goes through several steps and processes. In the event that the death penalty is imposed on a convict, such decision can still be appealed to the higher courts or reviewed by the Supreme Court. I believe in the sense of fairness and justice of our judges and justices to impose the penalty of reclusion perpetua or life imprisonment more rather than death. It is in this light that this representation votes in the affirmative to House Bill 4727.
Wominal, Ucampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ottega Pablo, Ottega Bini, Pakiaw, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Kapandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbo, Tadaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Fribilia, Robopuno, Robes, Rocamora.
Honorable Rocamora is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, my remaining colleagues. I voted no to the bill. To vote otherwise would be irresponsible, knowing fully well that our criminal justice system is not ready for the reimposition of death penalty. Irresponsible as this flaw or shortcoming in our criminal justice system is conducive to sending an innocent person to death. The fact that death penalty is now limited to violations of the Dangerous Drugs Law even heightens the need to reject the measure. The defect is evident in our second pillar of our criminal justice system, our law enforcement agencies. This is so as it is a fact that in the prosecution of dangerous drug cases today, 60% or more of these charges are trumped up, supported by planted evidence. I can attest to this, being a public prosecutor for 24 years and had prosecuted countless cases of dangerous drug violations since the passage of the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act. The reason for this objectionable and repugnant practice of planting evidence is the difficulty on the part of the law enforcement agencies in apprehending violators of the law. Yet, here we are expecting our police to arrest criminals as they do in the television or movies. Indeed, such things only happen in the movies, so to speak. Precisely because of such difficulty, the practice of evidence planting have now even evolved into extrajudicial killings. Some people say evidence planting is justified. After all, the subjects of this practice have been confirmed to be in the illegal drug business through tests, buys, being done. But to so claim would be to forget that in our jurisdiction, an accused is presumed innocent until proven otherwise by a competent and impartial court. I repeat, by a court, not by the police. This practice is complete with danger, danger of false accusation. Because what is there to stop the police from planting evidence for the purpose of extorting money? We don't have to look far into the past to come up with an example. I'm talking about the Korean incident at Camp Krami. What is there to stop the police from planting evidence to exact vengeance or simply to destroy another's reputation? All this are defects only in the second pillar of our judicial system. The third pillar is of course the courts. But we have a judicial system wherein the courts at the level where truth can best be determined, I'm speaking with trial courts, are committing errors in the imposition of death penalty at the rate of 7 is to 3, meaning...
And Lee, why not your speech?
About the why not, Mr. Speaker. Meaning seven erroneous decisions against three correct ones. We have a judicial system where numerous judges and justices and court personnel are dismissed, suspended, fined, and reprimanded. My fellow representatives, we are fully aware of this flaw in our criminal judicial system. We know as well the danger that this flaw poses, that it is conducive to sending an innocent person to death. When the bill first listed multiple crimes, I understood where the proponents were coming from. As a former public prosecutor, I have witnessed my own fair share of those gruesome tales they mentioned in the defense of the bill. I too have been shaken to my core when I uncovered the details of most horrible murders. I too have experienced my blood boil when I prosecuted those who committed the most morally corrupt acts of rape. I too have wished death upon these monsters of society. However, I knew even then that killing them will solve nothing. For one, there has never been evidence that death penalty resulted in the deterrence of criminality. I say that the best deterrence is a competent criminal justice system that carries two processes and makes certain the arrest, prosecution, conviction, and service of sentence of those who are truly guilty. I just want to be responsible, so I voted no.
Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry.
Honorable Roque is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, fellow colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, allow me to first state at the outset that as a legislator, I've always been a strong supporter of President Rodrigo Duterte. I support him because of his independent foreign policy. I support him because he has shown political will to bring about genuine change in this country. And yet despite this support for the president, I regret I cannot support the death penalty bill. Why? Well, first and foremost, let me state that when the House was being organized, I opted to stay in the minority despite my support for President Duterte precisely because I knew I could not support the death penalty bill and perhaps I also will not be able to support the bill lowering the age of criminal responsibility. To me, even if I have been known as a strong supporter of the president, it was better to remain in the minority because as such, I will not be expected to support administrative measures that run contrary to my conscience. Why am I against the death penalty? Well, Mr. Speaker, I have been advocating for the protection and promotion of human rights for almost the entirety of my human life. The most important of all human rights is the right to life. Without the right to life, we are not capable of processing any other rights. I've also been practicing law for 25 years before I was given a mandate by the people to represent them in this august Chamber of Congress. And what I have discovered is that after 25 years of almost daily appearance in courts and other tribunals, that our criminal justice system is in trouble. It appears that almost all the pillars of our criminal justice system are not working. Recently, there was an instance of a South Korean killed at the very premises of Camp Krami, the headquarters of the PNP, proof that the police as a pillar of the criminal justice system is not doing its job. The prosecutors have dismal conviction rates, 1% only for extralegal killings, 10% for drug-related cases, and of course, the Philippines now is notorious for the length of delay that we have in our courts. It takes a regular case, an ordinary case in the regional trial court, 5 years to be concluded, 10 years before the sadijen bayan. And of course, the public, the most important of all the pillars of our criminal justice system, appear to be accepting of shortcuts, shortcuts including extralegal killings. What I am saying, Mr. Speaker, is that where you have a criminal justice system that is simply not working, the chances of a wrong sentence being imposed on an innocent man is just too great. According to a Latin saying, "Titius semper es errare in acquitado, quam imponendo exparte misicordia, quam exparte justitia." It is always safer to err in acquitting than in punishing, to be on the side of mercy rather than to be on the side of justice. Indeed, the dysfunctions of our criminal justice system raise real issues about its susceptibility to arbitrariness and abuse. Moreover, a death sentence, one implemented, is irreversible. The automatic review does not help much. Our past experience shows that precisely, given the many gaps in our criminal justice system, the process of review takes a good many years. A death convict eventually exonerated by the High Court will have to look back with much regret at the years the appeals process wasted on his life as he waited for the acts to fall or not. It is wrong to propose a death penalty as a solution when the primary problem of our criminal justice system is effective enforcement and prosecution of law. There is always the high probability of someone being wrongly convicted and sentenced to death because of our dysfunctional criminal justice system. I have also taught international law for 15 years and I would be ignoring the basic tenet of international law that treaty obligations voluntarily entered into must be complied with in good faith. We're a party to the ICCPR and the Second Optional Protocol to the ICCPR where we voluntarily undertook obligation not to execute anyone in our jurisdiction, not to restore the death penalty. As a responsible member of the international community, we must abide by the principle of pacta sunt servanda, especially on such a crucial issue as the right to life. For this reason, I, Harry Roque, vote against the restoration of the death penalty in the Philippines. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Roger Ruello, Saktalan, Segarbariya, Sahali, Selceda, Salimbangan, Salo.
Yes, Honorable Salo is recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to state the reason for my yes vote. My countrymen, dear colleagues, friends, ladies and gentlemen, I am a preacher. I preach God's love, grace, and redemption. I preach about the Almighty God who gives life and who did not let people die in their sins. Instead, He chose to die for them and offered mankind redemption, not only in this life, but in the life after. As such, I am of firm belief that no one, not even the state, has the right to take away life. Because if the giver of life himself chose to die for people's sin so that they may have life, who then is worthy to take that gift of life from them? In truth, I am a member of a London-based international network on the worldwide abolition of death penalty called the Death Penalty Project. What runs through my veins and on my neurons then is the desire to oppose any move to reimpose death penalty in all and in any of its forms. When I became a member of this Congress, I was thrilled to note that my voice and my vote shall count in this proposed policy shift. However, I am conscious that I am in this Congress not in my personal capacity but as a representative of Cabayan Partilis whose interests and voice I have to articulate. After thorough discussions among the members of the Board of Cabayan Partilis who took into account the sentiments of its members, supporters, and the general public, the decision of the Cabayan Partilis Board is to support the reimposition of death penalty for certain heinous crimes for which a resolution for this purpose was adopted by the Cabayan Board. It was a product of spirited and vigorous exchange of ideas and sentiments. I could not but help feel proud of a Partilis show of independent and patriotic stance throughout the debate as well as the desire of the members of our Partilis Board to advance the general welfare and interests of our people. Thus, while my conscience opposes the reimposition of death penalty, I have to subordinate my personal belief and conviction to the decision of Cabayan Partilis Board. For indeed, this is the true essence of republican democracy. The voice of those we represent should be heard, and not our own personal voices. As such, my vote is a yes. Thank you very much.
Salon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
You may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I have not stood or stood up in this chamber on any issue, much more on the death penalty. And you, my colleagues, can attest to this. I decided I cannot just stay passive, seated at my desk, not saying anything, and keep my peace without articulating my own peace. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I voted no. I believe human dignity inherits in every person, no matter the individual status or station in life. Its infringement lies outside of power and commerce of governments and any human authority. I believe we appear to have slumbered and have forgotten... and have forgotten the clear mandate of the Philippine Constitution. Article 2, Section 11 of the Constitution cannot be any clearer. The state values the dignity of every human person and guarantees full respect for human rights. Further, we should proudly recall that the Philippines is a state party to 14 out of 18 international human rights conventions since the adoption of the Universal Declaration. We stood in many challenging and difficult situations, Mister Speaker, in the global stage behind the banner of this commitment to human rights, enrobing us with soft power that gave us disproportionately bigger influence than our meager economic and military power would have allowed us to have in regional and global affairs. As this representation views it, we, as a country, have started to lose our moral moorings that have shaped our society for many years. We have slowly but surely squandering what we have painstakingly achieved in the international arena from our heretofore unequivocal stance on promoting and protecting the inherent value of each human being. Mister Speaker, by its constitution, its treaty obligations, and the values that have shaped its history as a nation, marked with indubitable milestones in defense of democracy and human rights, the Philippines relentlessly progressed as one of the shining examples in the world of how a people could remain firmly committed to the inherent value of every human being. All of us together should be keeping our country in the same trajectory that leads to the flourishing of our communities and society. It's not too late, I think, for this August Chamber that we must allow and we must not allow anything to distract or dissuade us from pursuing this path. Mister Speaker, no to death penalty. Thank you.
Sambar, Sandoval, Satus Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sevillano, Semah, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suasignestridita, Suasignoraso, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tammuting, Tanangelina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tijada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño.
Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Tiño is recognized. Explain his vote.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I voted no for the following reasons. First, I cannot vote to give the state the power to take away the life of a Filipino citizen through the restoration of the death penalty given the grievously flawed state of our criminal justice system. It cannot be denied that all aspects of this system, from law enforcement to prosecution to the courts, the prison system, are all plagued with the evils that pervade our society, from the very basic lack of resources to incompetence, corruption, and patronage. In such a system, justice is negotiable for the rich and powerful and a restored death penalty would merely heap more injustice upon injustice against the poor and marginalized. Taken together with the other legislative initiative to lower the age of criminal liability to nine years old, the continuation of the AFP, the Armed Forces-led counterinsurgency, known as, now known as Oplant Kapayapaan, and which almost daily takes the lives of farmers in the countryside, and the PNP-led anti-drug operations, known as Oplantokhang, which, according to many reports, has taken the lives of up to 7,000 Filipinos, mostly in the urban areas. We are seeing how, under this administration, all the repressive instruments of the state, from the law to the courts, the prisons, the armed forces, and police, are being consolidated in an all-out war against the poor in order to secure and maintain the favorable conditions for the rich and powerful. Second, Mister Speaker, I voted no because for Congress to reinstate the death penalty would be patently unconstitutional. In no less than its declaration of principles, the 1987 Constitution, quote, "Adopts the generally accepted principles of international law as part of the law of the land," unquote. Foremost of these being the principle that international obligations must be kept. To quote, "Every treaty enforced is binding upon the parties to it and must be performed by them in good faith." As has been pointed out in the abbreviated debates on the floor, the Philippine State is a party to the Second Optional Protocol of the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, in which the Philippine State committed that no one within the jurisdiction of a state party to the present protocol shall be executed. Those are quotes from the protocol, and again, quote, "Each state party shall take all necessary measures to abolish the death penalty within its protocol," unquote. Let me emphasize, Mister Speaker, that the Second Optional Protocol is a state obligation, an obligation of the Philippine State, not merely of this or that administration. And what guarantees that future governments of the Philippines will continue to perform this obligation is precisely the principle declared in the 1987 Constitution that the Philippine State is bound by its international obligations.
Currently, why not do a speech?
Therefore, we are being asked to violate this constitutional principle when this Congress was asked to vote to reinstate the death penalty. The Supreme Court itself has clearly stated that, quote, "As an integral part of the community of nations, we are responsible to assume that our government constitutions and laws will carry out our international obligation." Hence, we cannot readily plead the Constitution as a convenient excuse for non-performance with our obligations, duties, and responsibilities under international law. For this reason, Mister Speaker, should this bill become law, it will most certainly be struck down as unconstitutional by the Supreme Court itself. And so for these reasons, Mister Speaker, I voted no.
Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna.
Honorable Tugna is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues. We in Cibac Party List votes yes on House Bill Number 4727 with an understanding that its passage will be supported by government and the administration's efforts to improve the inefficiencies and corruption in the police and prosecutorial functions and to reform the judiciary and correctional systems in our country. Our vote arose from the party's extensive consultations with our constituents on the ground, ground level, to ensure that we were able to express the true sentiment of our voters. An overwhelming number agree to the imposition of death penalty for those who committed high-level drug offenses, provided the necessary reforms are instituted to ascertain that justice is properly served. We accept that here in our country there are many inadequacies and inefficiencies in the processes and in the training of the concerned government officials, as well as threats of corruption in the prosecutorial, correctional, and judicial systems of our government. And as the said bill will reimpose death penalty, there is a strong need to ensure that the government will give the necessary training and education as well as instill commitment to sworn duties and adherence to truth and justice of all people involved in the process to determine whether an accused is guilty or not and whether death penalty should be imposed. Only by doing this, we are assured that the rationale behind the reimposition of death penalty is achieved. We voted yes with the understanding and on the hope that there are no wrongful convictions and that we are looking forward to prosecution and conviction of only the most debased and high-level drug offenses such as manufacturing, trading, and importation of dangerous drugs, and not the conviction of only the poor people, and that the manufacturer, trader, or importer be punished with the supreme penalty of death for the protection of our citizenry, our youth, and our future generation. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Tupas, Turabina Taman.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, the Honorable Taman.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillah, rahman, rahim, assalamualaikum, marahmatullahi, ta'ala wa barakatuhu. In the name of God, the Most gracious, the most merciful, for all the reasons articulated by colleagues against the death penalty, I vote no and more. I do not claim to be more righteous or more humane, nor claim that I am right and the others are wrong. This vote is not meant to divide or to oppose anyone. It is simply amin and my personal conviction based on the following reasons. First, as a moral, who will be most affected by this legislation? Amin has for the last decades witnessed, verified, assisted, and stood for the Muslim Filipino victims of warrantless arrest, illegal search, mistaken identity, hulidap, illegal detention, planting of evidence, most of which turned out to be framed up drug-related cases. This discrimination against Muslim Filipinos in the enforcement of law is seen in the findings of a survey made in Quezon City Jail Female Dormitory last 2013. The survey showed that said facility has 86 Muslim women detainees out of 548 detainees, or 16% of the jail population. The Muslim Filipinos in Quezon City is only 4%. Statistically speaking, nanganahulugan pong apat na beses kaming mas marami sa loob ng kulungan kaysa sa labas. Majority of these women are charged with drug-related cases, the situation of those who are likely to be at the receiving end of the law that this House just passed. Now my vote on the basis of being a Muslim. My stand on the death penalty came as a surprise to many since the Sharia law provides for the death penalty. Although we Muslims are a minority in this country, I cannot make a decision on a crucial issue, a matter of life and death, without consulting my faith and the authorities in it. Based on a roundtable discussion I mean conducted with Muslim religious leaders, we learned the following. The very essence of the Sharia law is the preservation of life. Forgiveness, mercy, and compassion must always prevail, as seen in the following conditions on the imposition of death penalty under the Sharia. One, it is the family of the victim who decides whether or not death is the justice they want, not the court, not the state. And this decision must be consensus. If there are 20 members of the family agreeing to death with only one objecting, still, the execution cannot be imposed. If the victim has a child who is a minor, the court will wait until this child becomes of age and will have the capacity to decide. In the case of adultery, which is one of the offenses punishable by death, there is a need to produce four witnesses who must all testify seeing the sexual act at the same time and the same place. This requirement of four witnesses is applied even if it is the husband himself who makes the accusation of adultery. And even if the four witnesses are produced, if the woman accused takes an oath before the Holy Quran denying the accusation, she is saved from execution. And if the accused woman is pregnant, even if she herself admitted to the offense, the penalty cannot be imposed until she has given birth and an additional two years for her to breastfeed her child. Fellow members of this August Chamber, many look at the Sharia law as a very harsh, brutal law. But in these few examples cited by our Muslim religious leaders, clearly, it is a manifestation of God's infinite mercy and compassion towards His creations. And I, foremost as a Muslim, and more essentially as a human being, cannot afford to transgress this mercy every creation is entitled to. Sarili ko pong buhay hindi ko kayang panagutan. I cannot afford and is most afraid to be held accountable for another life, even just one life. Thus, our vote, no. Maraming salamat.
Di, Umal, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, you may proceed. Explain your vote.
Yes, thank you, Mister Speaker. Being a member of the Committee on Justice and its Subcommittee on Judicial Reform, I tried to attend all the committee and subcommittee briefing and consultation on the matter of reimposition of the death penalty. Various agencies and cause-oriented groups were consulted and given their chance to ventilate their views on the matter. In the midst of all varying discussion and opinion, almost everyone agreed on one glaring fact, that our society is at a critical stage. Mister Speaker, there is an upfront and blatant disrespect of law. People are committing crimes that are not even defined by a revised penal code. We are experiencing unprecedented volume and scope of lawlessness all because of this drug menace. Mister Speaker, extraordinary measures are needed lest we continue on this downhill path of total ruin of our society and our community. This representation, Mister Speaker, is not of the belief that the reimposition of death penalty is going to be the catch-all, fix-all solution to all the above problems. It is just among the many reforms and changes that our country needs to undergo. Mister Speaker, my vote of yes today is also a commitment to address squarely judicial and prosecutorial reform, improvement of our corrective facilities, and the modernization and professionalism of our police and law enforcement institution. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde.
Honorable Bilarde is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. This representation would like to submit a written explanation of my no vote. But before that, I would like to only point out one thing. This representation believes, Mister Speaker, that our justice system is still young at this time. And mahirap nga naman talagang... And mahirap nga naman talagang iasa ang pagdedesisyon sa buhay ng isang tao, sa kapwa niyang tao. Lalo na't hindi nakakasigurado kung talagang totoo o tama o naibigay ang lahat ng rason, lahat ng ebedensya na nagpapatunay na ang taong iyon ay totoong may kasalanan. Kahit isang buhay lang po na magkamali tayo, na patawan ng kamatayan ay masyado na pong malaki. Dito, Mr. Speaker, naniniwala ako na dapat magkaroon ng pagbabago ang ating justice system. At sa pagbibigay ng isang kapangyarihan na pagpapataon ng o pagdedesisyon sa isang buhay na ito ay kitilin o patuluyin ay mahirap pagdesisyonan ng mabuti. With this, Mr. Speaker, I submit. Thank you very much.
Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara. Honorable Vergara is recognized to explain her vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, in our country, there is a persistent and seemingly unstoppable proliferation of drugs. There are evil and ruthless individuals who thrive and flourish at the expense of fellow Filipinos who are coerced into pushing and using drugs for easy money. There are drug lords who continue to be a clear and present menace to our country's peace and order. The increase in crimes committed nowadays is alarming. More often than not, the perpetrators are under the influence of drugs. These are horrific crimes which cry to the heavens for justice and at times go unpunished. For these reasons, our president has asked Congress for the reimposition of the death penalty. I cannot deny this truth. We need a severe penalty to send a strong message to all who break our laws and commit heinous crimes. Our country will no longer allow this. This call resonates with me. However, there are significant and equally valid factors that must be considered. Our judiciary system desperately needs reform. Corrupt prosecutors, judges, and judiciary personnel must be removed. Otherwise, the death penalty may be abused. We must review and streamline our judicial procedures. Our police force, the PNP, needs to improve on all fronts: skills, training, value formation, equipment, resources, to provide quality police service with honor and justice, as enshrined in the PNP badge, "Kapulisan na makadios, makabayan, makatao, at makakaliskasan", the PNP's organizational core values. Our prison facilities must be improved because even criminals must be treated humanely. In our country, where justice is inconspicuous, we need to strengthen and reform these institutions for the penalty of death is irrevocable, harsh, and most unforgiving. These three major reforms may seem like a Herculean task, but under President Duterte's leadership, I know we can do whatever we set our minds and hearts on. And so for today, until these reforms are addressed, resolved, and implemented, I vote no. In profound faith, I hold on to the belief that man is basically good. I uphold the sanctity of life, I respect due process and the rule of law, and I believe in justice for all Filipinos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin. Honorable Villarin is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, Akbayan cast an emphatic note to House Bill Number 4727. It is a railroaded measure that suffers from procedural and substantive infirmities. It is also a bill that wreaks of both rational and moral bankruptcy. It is unconstitutional as it violates the mandate that cruel, degrading, and inhuman punishment shall not be inflicted. Make no mistake, the death penalty will not make our communities any safer. We reiterate that in the absence of any evidence that would prove death penalty as an effective deterrent to crime, heinous or otherwise, a person's right to life must stand supreme. Death penalty as a punitive measure brings us back only to the Dark Ages. Mr. Speaker, colleagues, no crime is worth killing for, especially when the task of condemning a fellow Filipino to death will be undertaken within the context of a flawed criminal justice system, flawed from enforcement, prosecution, and adjudication, because none other than our Supreme Court revealed in a review of cases between 1993 to 2004 that six hundred forty-six death convicts could have been wrongfully executed due to erroneous decisions rendered by our lower courts. Mr. Speaker, capital punishment has a disproportionate impact on the poor. More than seventy-three percent of people on death row before 2006 earned less than ten thousand pesos a month, according to the Free Legal Assistance Group, a local NGO. The poor are particularly vulnerable to wrongful convictions and other problems because they can rarely afford to hire competent lawyers. Minors and mentally handicapped are also at risk despite protections written into the law. Reports by Amnesty International and the Commission on Human Rights from the late nineties to the two thousands found that due to poor record-keeping and police procedures, several death row inmates had been minors at the time of their alleged crimes. Marlon Paraso, a deaf-mute and mentally challenged man, was sentenced to death in 1995 even though he had not been capable of understanding the charges or the proceedings against him. His sentence was eventually overturned thanks to pressure from human rights groups. But there is no way for sure how many other disabled prisoners have been wrongfully convicted. There is also no reason to think that these fundamental flaws in the Philippines' criminal justice system have been fixed. Discrimination and lack of due process in criminal cases remain a serious concern. Corruption is still rampant. As such, Mr. Speaker, some words of caution. Expect that many of those to be condemned to certain death are the poor precisely because they do not have access to quality legal services, unlike the rich and powerful who are running the country's criminal organizations. Expect repercussions from the international community as we go against the trend of abolition and insist on breaking international agreements forged by our words of honor. And enforceably passing this bill, we risk losing more than 1.6 billion dollars in trade yearly and perhaps two hundred thousand jobs. Yes, Mr. Speaker. And two hundred thousand jobs that came with our solemn vow of abolishing the death penalty and protecting the value of human life. Expect future generations to thrive in an environment of violence, impunity, and retribution as we move closer towards igniting a vicious cycle of vengeance instead of justice. As far as Akbayan is concerned, together with those who bravely stood for true justice, we will not let this happen. Expect us to continue the fight if only to save an innocent life from suffering a gruesome death. Again, for these reasons, this representation of Akbayan Party votes against the death penalty. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meleso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Mercamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate. Honorable Sarate is recognized to explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang tinatawang ito po ng Bayan muna, consistent sa kanyang naging tayo sa libel committee, kung saan siya ay bumutol rin ng no, no pa rin po ang magiging boto ng kinatawang ito sa House Bill Number 4727 o ang pagbabalik ng kaparusahang kamatayan. Dahil sa aming pong pagtindig na ito ay isang kontra mahirap, instrumento ng panunupil at batas na hindi lulutas sa kriminalidad sa kasalukuyang sistema ng hustisyang korap, kontrolado, dominado, at nagsisilbi lamang sa interes ng iilan mga nasa kapangyarihan. Ginawang speaker, kontra mahirap ang pagbalik ng death penalty. mismong datos ng Commission on Human Rights ang nagsasabing seventy-three point one percent ng nasa death row noong taong 2006 ay pawang mahirap. Sila ang mga kababayan nating kumikita lamang ng kulang sampung libo ka dabuan. Bagkus hindi kayang magbayad ng pribadong abugado natututok ng husto sa kanilang kaso. Ilan pang ordinaryo at mahirap na taong mga wala o limitado ang kapasidad na ipagtanggol ang sarili ang mamamatay sa mahal at elitistaang sistema ng hustisya sa ating bansa, ginawang speaker. instrumento ng panunupil ang parusang kamatayan. Habang umiiral ang pandarahas laban sa mamamayan, magiging instrumento ng panunupil ang death penalty. Sinapadri Gomez, Borgos, and Zamora, si Rizal, at Makaryos Akay ay iilan lamang sa naging biktima ng parusang kamatayan ng kolonyalista sa salang paninindigan para sa bayan. Patuloy ang korapsyon at abuso ng kapangyarihan sa hanay ng mga pulis, militar, at iba pang ahente ng estado. Patuloy na dumarami ang biktima ng warrantless arrest, trump-up charges, at kawalan ng due process. Ang tanong, ginawang speaker, ilang daang aktibista, leader ng mga organisasyong magsasaka at manggagawa, at ordinaryong tao ang patuloy na mamamatay sa mapanupil na sistemang ito na palulubain ng parusang kamatayan. Hindi napipigilan at hindi mapipigilan ng parusang kamatayan ang kriminalidad. Noong taong 1999, nang patawan ng parusang kamatayan ang pitong mga convictadong kriminal, tumas pa ng kinse porsyento ang kriminalidad kumpara sa nagdaang taon. Pati sa ibang bansa, ginawang speaker, na kagaya ng Indonesia at Iran, hindi nababawasan bagkus tumas ang kaso ng drug trafficking, kahit pa mahigpit na ipinutupad ang parusang kamatayan sa mga kriming ito. Walang katarungan sa isang sistemang hustisyang maraming depekto at bahagi ng sistemang elitista at korakot. Para sa taong 1993 hanggang 2004, higit pitong porsyento, o exactly seventy-one point seventy-seven percent, ang pinatawan ng parusang kamatayan sa ating bansa ang napatunayang may judicial error. Ilan pang inosente, ginawang speaker, may sakit sa pag-iisip, menor de edad, at matatanda ang isasakripisyo sa panukalang batas House Bill 4727 at depektibong sistema ng ating hustisya. Hindi parusang kamatayan ang sagot sa kriminalidad at sakit ng ating lipunan. Indilulual ang kriminalidad, droga, korapsyon, at depektibong sistema ng hustisya ang isang lipunang atrasado at dominante ng iilan at ng mga dayuhan. Hindi kailanman ito masusolusyonan ng pasismo at paggamit ng dahas at batas laban sa ating mamamayan. Hindi batas ng pagbabalik ng death penalty ang kailangan ng ating mamamayan, ginawang speaker. Tatapusin ko nalang po, ginawang speaker. Hindi batas sa pagbabalik ng death penalty ang kailangan ng ating mamamayan. Kundi ang pagkilos para sa tunay at makabuluhang pagbabago tungo sa makatarungan at mapayapang lipunan. Dapat wakasan natin, dapat wakasan ng estado, ginawang speaker, ang lumalalang kahirapan ng ating bayan hindi ang buhay ng ating mga pobring mamamayan. No to death penalty. Maraming salamat po.
Zubiri. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Zubiri is recognized.
Thank you, Speaker. This representation from the Third District of Bukidnon and from the Bukidnon Paglaon Party would like to manifest its vote. Mr. Speaker, my no vote was decided upon even before I first entered the halls of Congress. This decision was already stamped inside the very core of my heart. I was steadfast from the very beginning and remained true to my word. For me, it was non-political. It always remained a no from the very first day. I believe even from the first day I was born. It is my belief that injustice should not be met with vengeance, but rather injustice should be met with justice. Meaning, atonement for a crime committed should be meted out with a true-to-form hard labor. Sentencing criminals to death is an easy way out. There is no atonement whatsoever to speak of. Hence, as a neophyte representative, I need to be true to myself in order to be able to serve the very people who put me here. With our system flawed and enforcing agencies facing challenging times, I fear for the welfare of the poor and the unfair justice that will rain upon those who are marginalized. Only those who have the means to seek proper representation may have a chance of survival. But those who don't will be in very serious trouble. This is my primal fear, and I hope, Mr. Speaker, and I pray, it doesn't come to this. Also, irrelevant to some, but very relevant to many, this bill is about crime, and crime is synonymous to poverty. From time and memorial, our national budget is too focused on the national capital region and our national or central offices. Over fifty percent of national spending is within a limited area, while the rest of the regions are left with loose change. My region alone, Region 10, at 2.4% of the total budget and the rest of my neighboring regions are not too far away. Hence, spreading the wealth more equally may or may not totally solve criminality, but will definitely make a big dent on poverty and improve the lives of our countrymen. In the end, whether the yes have it or the no's have it, poverty is the enemy, not ourselves, nor our populace. My dear colleagues, the next step is finding a lasting solution to our long-and-running wealth disparity. It may take a big change in the way we do things. It may even be in a different form of running a government. I believe this is the next issue to be tackled. Are you ready for it? Are you ready to share the wealth with your countrymen? Mr. Speaker, I follow by this rule, this simple rule that I follow each day of my life. And it's simply, he who has no sin He who has no sin cast the first stone. This is why I voted no for the death penalty, Mr. Speaker. That's all. Marami pong salamat. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill...
Mr. Speaker, may I just make a manifestation in the result of the voting that Representative Victoria approach the desk and informed them that he voted yes, But his vote was not registered. So the final vote would be, a while ago, the chair stated that it was 216 yes, Fifty-four no, and one abstention. It should now be 217 for the yes votes, Same for fifty-four for no and one abstention.
Please make the correction.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for consideration for approval on third reading, House Bill 4924. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? And thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The secretary is directed to hold a roll.
House Bill Number 4924, An Act Dividing Barangay Magugpo In the city of Tagung, Province of Davao del Norte, Into five distinct and independent barangays To be known as Barangay Magugpo Poblacion, Barangay Magugpo East, Barangay Magugpo West, Barangay Magugpo North, and Barangay Magugpo South. Roll call up members, consideration, House Bill Number 4924. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Adbingola, Agraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angarakasilio, Antonino, Antonio Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Villisana, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Binitas, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariabida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Cagas Calderón, Calixt Rubiano, Caminero, Campos Canama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro France, Castro Fedinil, Katampo, Caetano, Celeste, Seravica, Sirillas, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisolgo, Cuah, Curesma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalok, Dasa, De Jesus, De Veneza, De Vera, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Dimoporodula, Dimoporokalit, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago Inverga, Iris, Erigel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Bardone, Farías, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Plorrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Petebella, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandra, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Griseta, Gulya, Hernandez, Reredi, Hofer, Halustos, Xavier, Co, Cong Hun, Labat Labat, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaytong, Labrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Maupacalroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mongodadato Suarto, Mongodadato Sadid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinyo, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bini, Paciau, Padwano, Palma, Pancho, Pangniban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisi, Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rampos, Rivilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez, Sinsido, Rodriguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Rumbaldes, Romaldo, Roque Harry, Roque Rogello, Sacdalan, Sacarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, Satusreto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansingas, Rita, Swansinguracho, Suarez, Elvarado, Tanmuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Changko, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tungna, Tupas, Torabi, Nataman, Ti, Umal, Unavia, Ungap, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco Catera, Beloso, Bergara, Billa Puerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Rasa Suarez, Billa Rica, Billa Rim, Yolago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, You, Sumo Remarca Men, Sumo Ronaldo, Sarate, Zubiri.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, this being a local bill authored by the honorable Speaker Bebot Alvarez, He has indicated his desire to be present when this is considered for third reading. With that, I reconsider the approval on third reading of House Bill 4924.
Any objection to the motion?
I withdraw the, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, your honor. More properly, I withdraw the consideration of House Bill 4924 To give way to the honorable Speaker.
There is a withdrawal of the motion. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of Committee Report Number 116 On House Bill 5063. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
House Bill Number 5063, An Act Granting the Pangkasenan Gulf Waves Network Corporation A Franchise to Construct, Install, Establish, Operate, and Maintain Radio and Television Broadcasting Stations Throughout the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the Chairman of the Committee on Franchises, the Honorable Alvarez is present. I move that the explanatory note of this measure serve as its sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill 5063. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments on House Bill 5063. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for approval on second reading of House Bill 5063. So move, Mr. Speaker.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for consideration of Committee Report 117 On House Bill 5064. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the bill.
House Bill Number 5064, An Act Renewing for Another Twenty-Five Years, The Franchise Granted to Subic Broadcasting Corporation Under Republic Act Number 7511, Entitled An Act Granting the Subic Broadcasting Corporation A Franchise to Construct, Install, Operate, and Maintain Radio Broadcasting and Television Stations in the Philippines and for other purposes.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the Chairman of the Committee on Franchises, the Honorable Alvarez is present. I move that the explanatory note of the measure serve as its sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments on House Bill 5064.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill 5064.
As many as in favor, the bill say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it, the bill is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for consideration for approval on second reading, Committee Report 148 on House Bill 5175. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mr. Speaker.
The secretary is directed to read the bill.
House Bill Number 5175, An Act Renewing for Another Twenty-Five Years, The Franchise Granted to Beta Broadcasting System Inc. Under Republic Act Number 8026, Entitled An Act Granting the Beta Broadcasting System Corporation A Franchise to Construct, Operate, and Maintain Radio Broadcasting Stations in the Island of Luzon and for other purposes.
Mr. Speaker, the Chairman of the Committee on Franchises, the Honorable Alvarez is present. I move that the explanatory note of this measure serve as its sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments on House Bill 5175.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for approval on second reading of House Bill 5175. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 5175 is approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration for approval on second reading, Committee Report Number 149 on House Bill 5176. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 5176, An Act Renewing for Another Twenty-Five Years, The Franchise Granted to Saraga Integrated and Management Corporation Under Republic Act Number 7478, Entitled An Act Granting the Saraga Integrated Management Corporation of the Philippines A Franchise to Construct, Install, Operate, and Maintain For Commercial Purposes Radio and Television Broadcasting Stations in the Philippines and for other purposes.
Mr. Chairman, the, Mr. Speaker, the Chairman of the Committee on Franchises, the Honorable Franz Alvarez is present. I move that the explanatory note of the measure serve as its sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments on House Bill 5176.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill 5176. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 5176 is served by approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration and commit, for approval on second reading of Committee Report Number 150 on House Bill 5177. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 5177, An Act Renewing for Another Twenty-Five Years, The Franchise Granted to Infocom Communications Network Inc. Presently known as the Now Telecom Company Inc. Under Republic Act Number 7301, Entitled An Act Granting Infocom Communications Inc. A Franchise to Construct, Establish, Operate, and Maintain Mobile Radio Stations Such as Radio, Paging Systems, Cellular Phone Systems, Personal Communication Network, and Trunk Radio Systems Within or Without the Philippines for a period of twenty-five years And for Other Purposes, as amended by Republic Act Number 7940.
Mr. Speaker, the Chairman of the sponsoring committee, the Committee on Franchises, the Honorable Franz Alvarez is present. I move that the explanatory note of the measure serve as its sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments on House Bill 5177. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move for approval on second reading of House Bill 5177.
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 517 is approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, This is an omnibus motion for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Numbers 3112, 3474, 4216, From the Committee on Justice to the Committee on Population and Family Relations. House Bill Number 194, from the Committee on Foreign Affairs To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. House Bill Number 4900, from the Committee on Health To the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Bill Numbers 3781, 3838, 3871, and 3913, From the Committee on Government Reorganization To the Committees on Government Reorganization and Appropriations. House Bill Number 187, from the Committees on Agriculture And Food and Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources To the Committee on Agrarian Reform. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection to the omnibus motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I remove that we refer the following House Resolutions To the appropriate committees. House Resolution 735 to the Committee on Ecology. House Resolution 746 to the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Resolution 753 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution 756 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution 763 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 767 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution 774 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 778 to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. House Resolution 783 to the Committee on Cooperatives Development. House Resolution 788 to the Committee on Metro Manila Development. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion or referral? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, I move That we hold a reference of business. Could the Secretary General be directed to read The title of bills and resolutions on first reading As well as committee reports and communications For referral to the appropriate committee. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read For first reading the bills and resolutions.
Reference of Business, Bill from First City, House Bill 5181, Providing for Further Options for Compliance with Section 7 of Republic Act 10000, Republic Representative Yap Artur.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 5182, Providing for the Conversion of Done Credit on Roads, Representative Gatsalian.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5184, Imposing a Lugging Bang in Tikaw and Guriya's Island, Basbati, and Bravo Mariabida.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 5185, Creating the Province of Baguindanao North, Semah.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5186, Redistricting the Province of Baguindanao and Cotobato City into Three Legislative Districts of Semah.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5187, The Internet Government Regulation, Act of 2017, Representative Alihano.
Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 5188, Providing for Rural Employment Assistance Program, Representative Alihano.
Committee on Rural Development.
House Bill 5189, Providing for Exemption from Income Tax to Public School Teachers, Representative Alihano.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5190, Promoting the Use of Urban Farming, Representative Alihano.
Special Committee on Food and Security.
House Bill 5191, Mandating the Chat to Include the Subject of Moral History, Representative Alihano.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Communications Letter dated January 27 of Noel C. Basañez, OIC, DPWH.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated January 30 of Alan S. Romeño, Ceso Ford, DPWH.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated January 30 of Senaidet Titán, Assistant Regional Director, DPWH.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated February 7 of Rick B. Sambales Senior, General Mayor, Palawan Electric Cooperative.
Committee on Cooperatives Development.
Letter dated January 9, 2017 of Dato. Roni Kishenzwat, Speaker, Regional Judiciary Assembly, Armed.
Committee on Muslim Affairs.
Letter dated February 10 of Further Effects on Under Secretary.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter stated February 16 and 23 of, and March 1 of Roger Idino, Deputy Director, BSP.
Committee on Bangs and Bangs.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal Number 78 Dated March 6, 2017. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session till tomorrow, March 8, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
We adjourn till tomorrow, 4 o'clock in the afternoon.